All right, we are back in open session. I will open this open session at six seventeen. This is again the town of Rutland Select Board Meeting. We're meeting in the lower level of the Rutland Public Library. We had an executive session, we now are returned to open session. If we can start briefly with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
If the board is amenable, I would like to take item A under new business out of order at this, at the start of this, so that we can allow the chief to leave if he would so choose. And that would be to ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the town of Rutland and Rutland Trollman's Union Mascot three ninety-nine for fiscal year twenty twenty-five through fiscal year twenty twenty-seven as presented in our packets.
It's all moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second motion.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, Harry.
Sekmenai.
Mattsonai.
Galvinai.
Whitmanai. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief, and thanks to the union also for the
I will tell.
Conversation.
Thanks.
We will move into the minutes treasury warrant payroll. We have the approval of treasury warrant twenty-four dash nineteen and payroll twenty-four dash PW nineteen.
I make a mo- uh, motion to approve treasury warrant twenty-four dash nineteen and payroll twenty-four dash PW nineteen.
Second emotion.
Uh, motion and second, Austin, anything?
Nothing this week.
And I think we got the expense report reconciliation from Donna last cycle saying that it was the uh, third quarter, going into the third quarter. So asked department heads and and staff to kind of check and see where their spending was. Nothing stood out to me in that anyway.
Yeah, nothing we didn't anticipate.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments? Roll call, Harry.
Sekmenai.
Mattsonai.
Ledgerai.
Galvinai.
Whitmanai. Um, we have the approval of meeting minutes February twelfth, twenty twenty-four. This was a budget meeting and I think it was just Harry, Paul and I that were in attendance. It was a night that Zoom wasn't working for Jen and Tom. So, uh, Harry, we've held these because we needed a courtroom to be able to approve. So I don't know if we have, if you've had a chance to look at them and if we have a motion to, a motion for those meeting minutes. Between you and Paul.
Motion made to accept the minutes of the budget meeting.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any conversation about them? Roll call, Harry.
Sekmenai.
Mattsonai.
Whitmanai.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tamika, for holding those. I know it's been a lot of back and forth.
I don't, I don't know how you came up with all these numbers.
Then we have another set of, we'll separate them out just because of attendance. The meeting, a regular meeting on March fourth, twenty twenty-four. I believe Harry and Jen were absent at the time.
I make a motion to accept meeting minutes, March fourth, two thousand twenty-four, regular, regular meeting minutes.
Second emotion.
Any conversation? Hearing none, roll call. Paul.
Mattsonai.
Galvinai.
Whitmanai. We have executive session minutes from that meeting. I think it's best not released at that time, given that there were two different entities. We can hopefully release them together at a upcoming meeting. So we'll hold them for release if that's possible.
I make a motion to accept March fourth, two thousand twenty-four, executive session minutes not to be released at this time to the public.
Second emotion.
Questions, comments, concerns? Roll call, Paul.
Mattsonai.
Galvinai.
Whitmanai. We have the March eleventh budget meeting with, um, I think it was also myself, Paul and Tom in attendance. I think there were, um, yeah. This was a budget meeting this past Monday with FinCom.
Make a motion to accept budget meeting minutes, March eleventh, two thousand twenty-four.
Second emotion.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Here, I know that this was brought up in the FinCom meeting about the free cash concern. I didn't take it, I didn't understand it to be the way FinCom had heard it. And I didn't go back and watch the move, the video. So I'm not sure if it makes sense to amend them to match what FinCom had or if we leave them as what we had, which was my understanding.
No, whatever you prefer.
Okay. Then I personally am okay leaving them as these because I, the question was under, on the second page, under fiscal year twenty twenty-five operating budget, the second paragraph, they provided Austin guidance to use both free cash and ARPA funds to balance budget with a maximum amount of three hundred dollars from free cash. And then the question was, that's how I understood the conversation to go. FinCom understood it to mean that they only wanted a three hundred thousand dollar free cash budget. So they wanted basically the rest as a cut budget. I didn't interpret it that way. And I didn't go back to watch the, the video, so I'm guilty of that. So I'm okay keeping it this way because that's the way I understood it, but I don't know how the rest. Do we have a motion and a second? Paul?
Mattsonai.
Galvinai.
Whitmanai. Thank you, thank you, Tamika. We are moving into public hearing. We have, we were posted for six o'clock, sorry, we're a little late, for a common vic license for TG and VAT Enterprises Inc., Maple Ave Diner, which is the two Maple Ave. It was the former Heavy Evvies, I believe.
Yes.
So, um, this is just for a common vic, not, um, there's no alcohol or anything. So this is pretty standard. All the fees and everything has been collected. Insurance, yeah, she sold the whole building, I believe, right?
Yes, um, and the whole building was sold, which included the apartments with it. So the former owner held a current common vic license for this location and we essentially have to do a whole new process to, to transfer the license, for lack of a better term. It's going to be renamed Maple Ave Diner and it's going to be operated in the same way that it was previously. It's currently undergoing some renovations and they're hoping to reopen to the public in around like late, mid to late April.
So is there anyone, I opened the public hearing, I think. Is there anyone here to speak to the common vic public hearing for the former Heavy Evvies?
Arthur was not able to make it tonight.
That's okay, and I don't see anyone on Zoom. I think Tim's here for the con con appointment. You're not here to speak to that? Dick, are you here to speak to that? No, okay.
Only sad to see it go.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sad to see it go. I know they really built something special and I'm psyched because they're, they're keeping it. They're trying to keep essentially the same concept, so.
And the nice thing is, um, they're a local family and business owner, they live here in town, they work here in town. So, um, it's staying within the Rutland family, so to speak.
Yeah, so they have a pulse on the community and everything.
Absolutely.
Heavy Evvies daughter, he used to work for me, so.
Oh, that's awesome. So I would, I'll close the public hearing and then I would entertain a motion to approve the common vic license for the Maple Ave Diner as presented.
Motion to approve the common vic to all the license for TG and VAT Enterprises to Maple Avenue.
Paul, I know that was lengthy, I apologize. I first need a motion to close the hearing.
Oh, sorry.
Then we have, then we can come back to that.
That's my fault. Can we have a motion to close the hearing?
Make a motion to close tonight's public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, Harry.
Sekmenai.
Mattsonai.
Ledgerai.
Galvinai.
Whitmanai. Sorry, that's my fault.
Okay, I'm gonna take what Paul said and keep it.
So we have a motion from Paul to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Tom, second. Any comments, questions, concerns? Roll call, Harry.
Sekmenai.
Mattsonai.
Ledgerai.
Galvinai.
Whitmanai, I'm wishing them best of luck. I'm gonna skip over for tonight, member comments and announcements. We have a full agenda. We, no, we have public comment, this is members, so this is for select board. But normally I do a little spiel, but I'm gonna skip it. So unless the, anyone, other members of the board have anything major. Hearing none, going into public comments. Name an address, please.
Jean Sigliano, twenty-seven Souci Drive. I moved here a year ago, I got on the event committee and the event committee mostly was doing concerts, but we wanted to add some other, some other activities. So we did a survey of the community to see what they wanted and a lot of what came back in the survey, which I believe, I said to all of you, was stuff we already have. But people obviously don't know that it's offered by this organization or that organization. So we're going to have a community fair on May nineteenth and we're inviting all organizations, clubs and departments in the town to have a table or an activity outside at this community fair to show what they do, so the community can come out and say, oh, we do have an egg hunt or, oh, we do. All the things they asked for, many of them we already do. I mean, somebody already does, not the event committee. We, the event committee, don't want to take over what another group is doing. So it's been a learning curve for us because most of us on the committee are new to the town. So, um, so I just wanted to put that out there, the date, May nineteenth, from eleven to three, at the community center. And on, um, so if, if you guys want to have a table, we'd love to have you along with any other board or commission in the town. We'll try to send out information, but we don't always have the right emails, I'm finding out. We send things out, but they come back, so I'm not sure who, who gets what.
So if I can, if you can send a note to Tamika and she can send it out to all the chairs of the various boards and commissions and staff, the department heads also.
Absolutely.
Um, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Because I, I love the idea. I think it's something we've kind of been talking about for a number of years, so I love it.
So and there's no charge, because I was at the Friends of Seniors today and told them about it. They're like, oh, well, you're charging? No, we're not charging, it's not really gonna cost us anything, we don't need to charge anything. And we're also having an Earth Day cleanup on Saturday, April twentieth, from nine to twelve. And both of those things will have registration forms on our pages on the town website. So we're looking for groups to register so we can be prepared for both things. We need to know how many garbage bags for the Earth Day cleanup, gloves, we're serving pizza at that, at the end. And for the community fair, how many tables we're gonna need. So we need people to register and it's all on Google Forms and we'll send you links to all of that and they'll be all on the website, too.
Is the community fair planned to be outside or inside or just?
Both.
Okay, both. I wasn't sure if it was weather dependent or.
So like if the DPW or fire department or police department come, they might want to come with a vehicle and have it outside and do something outside with the vehicle. Other folks like you guys might want to be inside, you know. Any other questions? Because we have a meeting at six thirty.
I know, sorry.
Chopping at the bit together.
Sorry, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
And thanks for bringing those up and we can ask, like I said, our office to send out notice for, for both.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for public comment?
No, thank you.
Mr. Williams, I was looking forward to it.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Moving into town administrator update, Austin, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I thank you, Matt, sure, I'll be very brief recognizing the agenda. I just wanna remind folks that we're still working on the water infrastructure. I know residents of the Cheryl and Drive area received another notice. That notice is a monitoring notice that we're required to send every time we do a sampling result. Until we get levels below the regulated level, which is point zero five milligrams per liter, we will have to continue sampling, but also notifying residents. We are still working to mitigate that issue. Obviously, it's an infrastructure issue, starting from the water source to the treatment, to the distribution. So that continues to be a challenge for us and, and hoping that the FY twenty-five budget provides some investment to, to plan a little bit better and, and work towards repairing our long-needed infrastructure. Just want to give an update, I mentioned at the last, well, any questions on the water before I get to that?
Well, did you have any feedback from, since they, have they gotten the letter already?
Yes.
And have we gotten feedback from them? From any of the citizens on the street?
One resident, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Officially, and then there's social media that has its own feedback. Last, I mentioned, we opened the bids for the public safety and library roof repair project. The bids came in, well, one bid. We only received one bid, it was twenty thousand dollars over what we were projecting. So we'll be coming to the board with a recommendation to either get the project done with an alternative funding source or wait and go out to bid again. We're fortunate to receive a bid, as you recall, the last time we went in the fall, we didn't receive any. I think this is driven a little bit by the market and we're, you know, we're, we're gonna pay what everyone else is paying for construction costs, so disappointing news. As you recall, that project is being funded from ARPA, which we do have some capacity to, to fill that gap if we need to. And then just finally, our auditors notified us, they have completed the FY twenty-three audit as well as the required single audit, because we have received over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal grant funding, which includes ARPA. So we received it a couple of years ago, but technically because we spent it, we have to conduct a single audit. The management letter and the financial statements are finalized and we'll be sharing that at your next board meeting as well as with the finance committee. And happy to answer any questions you may have, recognizing it's a busy agenda.
Just a quick question?
Yep.
I was looking over some of my notes and we had talked about a task force rebuilding.
Yep.
Any thought on that, where we are?
Uh, yeah, so the board approved the charge. We just need to start the recruitment. As you recall, there's some members of respective boards and committees and then kind of do a call for interest for kind of the at-large members, so we can start on that.
Good.
All right, thank you, Austin.
Yep.
Um, moving into old business, we have the continued discussion of the fiscal year twenty-five budget. I appreciate everyone being present on Thursday night with the schools in present. And I think there's a lot of information there and I appreciate that, so Austin, I'll let you.
Well, do, would, do you mind if we take personnel policies out of order?
Oh, yeah, sorry, that's fine. Is that, is the board okay with?
Yeah.
Moving into the discussion, since Ally's here, thank you, sorry, Ally.
Oh, don't be sorry.
I like having you here now.
So happy to be here, I'm always happy to be here.
So just, just to intro and then I'll let Ally do her thing. So I think it's, two meetings ago, we introduced, through the, through my report, we introduced the draft personnel policies, had it on the agenda last time, recognizing though it wasn't a full board. So want to continue the, the discussion of personnel policies and employee handbook, our first ever employee handbook, and then enhancing a lot of the personnel policies that we have now. Some of these are not new, some of these are existing language that's been just modified to a different format. Some are some new policies and, and they can help let Alex have her do her thing on what we're proposing and hoping to get these in line, recognizing that there's a lot of employees, whether it's on the union side or non-union side, that are eager to see some of the things that we've proposed tonight.
Great, thank you. Hi, everyone, thank you for having me. This is a lengthy document, so I'm certainly not gonna read it. I'll kind of go through chapter by chapter. I don't know how many of you were able to get, you know, kind of through the whole thing. It's pretty easy to kind of skim once you get going. Because a lot of it is pretty standard, pretty standard for an employee handbook, either in the public or the private sector anyhow. So, yeah, we'll just get going. Really, it's got a pretty basic introduction, chapter one, again, pretty basic, equal opportunity employer. You know, at-will employment, we've always been an at-will employer, obviously a CBA. You know, has their own, has their own employment contracts, but all non-union at-will. We don't have, the, the unions have probationary periods. This is just standard with the union. But in terms of non-union, we wanted to have some sort of emphasis on the importance of your first year of employment. A probationary period felt like kind of a, an aggressive thing to be kind of instituting. So this first year of employment paragraph is really, it's pretty broad, but it just kind of goes into why we find the first year so important and the kind of work that as a, as a town administration, we're, we're looking to do. When we get a little farther, we do have kind of new annual performance evaluations and tied to that will be a more simple six-month. Hopefully about halfway through, someone's first year of employment will really just be a quick check-in, a nice form. We'll have their department head, you know, fill out a few things and it'll be more of a self-evaluation for the employee, kind of saying, this is how it's going. And it would likely just end up being a quick meeting with me and I can do some check-ins and say, how's it going? Any questions, comments, you know, thoughts, concerns? But it's just a nice way to get kind of some of those touches, especially on some of ours new staff that, you know, especially, you know, DPW, a lot of the departments, but you get in and you kind of get going in your work and, and you put your head down and all of a sudden, six months is, is here and you can't even believe you did it. So it's just a nice chance to check in. We did our best to put into writing what our regular hours are, but I'm sure everybody knows and you can see it here that, you know, our regular working, you know, town hall hours and when we're open, Monday through Thursday, eight to four essentially. But we have employees that kind of work the full gamut of, you know, ten, fifteen hours, up to forty. And so we tried to kind of include everything in there, but everything's obviously, you know, apt to change as, as things are required to change. I'm just gonna keep going, I just don't want to miss. And if anyone has a question on anything as I'm scrolling, please feel free to, to interrupt. I don't want to take too much time, but I don't want to miss anything that someone wants to chat about. Attendance, workplace safety, smoke-free workplace, alcohol, drug-free workplace. Again, all pretty standard. You know, a lot of this handbook language was, was sort of taken and, and, you know, kind of incorporated, so we didn't have to rewrite the whole world and I didn't have to write a hundred and forty or a hundred and twenty pages of. I guess that's it, chapter one's pretty simple. Does anyone have any questions on anything in the chapter, that first chapter?
The only thing in the first chapter, well, that I see, I don't want to go out of line if anybody else, is you settle on a twenty-hour as one of the basics.
For?
For benefits, for, you know, I'm trying to figure out how you arrived at that twenty-hour number.
That already existed.
Where?
We have, believe it or not, pieces of paper that are personnel policies for non-union employees and that existed.
Really? Okay.
I think that might have been one of the first pieces that our first town administrator tried to do, I, I believe, I don't know for sure.
It, it's definitely, yeah, it might very well be, actually. I'm thinking about the, when, when I came into this role and Becky and I had a great meeting one of my first weeks, I said, what do you got? And she had a nice folder and she had all these great pieces of paper that had been contributed to the, to the personnel policies cause over the years. And that was, yeah, that was one of them.
So, Ally, we have benefits and other issues tied to that twenty hours now. So that's basically in cement, that can't go to like twenty-five or thirty.
Not without removing benefits from some people who have them or we'd have to do some certain, some sort of grandfathering of employees that are already here.
All right.
Yeah, looks like, just real quick, I think those, the first set of non-union policies were approved by the previous board of selection in two thousand and eleven.
Oh, even before?
That was even before, yeah.
Wow.
But I think one of the challenges has been that they've not been before, like, in front of us
Yes, correct.
as a board consistently. And so as a, as a new town administrator, new board president, there might be something added, but it wasn't a continuity piece. So the hope was here to have a continuity piece in an actual document that is retrievable for the employees as well as for department heads and staff and us as well, as we need.
Yeah, the only reason I mentioned the twenty hours, seems like such a low bar for benefits and all the other stuff. I mean, you get your police thirty-two hours, you get a lot of people forty hours, you got some that are eighteen hours. So, you know, and, and less, so I'm just looking, I'm going, even in the corporate world, thirty-two hours is still a minimum for where you get full benefits. So I was trying, why twenty? But if it's already in place and it's already there.
Yeah, my guess is that the, my guess, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the hours and how they're set for certain departments was a cost-saving method at some point. You could have somebody come work for forty hours, but if you ask them to work for twenty and you still think they're gonna get the job done, you're gonna save quite a bit of money. That would be my guess, is where this kind of varying of hours came in across positions. And I think it's something that you see in smaller municipalities anyway. A lot of towns smaller than ours around here, you know, you'll only have kind of very part-time, even executive secretaries working for the select board and things like that.
And I mean, it's a twenty hours is prorated, benefits on a prorated basis.
If you're at twenty hours, yes, and so that you're vacation, you're, everything's prorated. There's still eligible for insurance, health benefits, those aren't prorated.
Right.
But yes, everything else is prorated to the hours you work. And then if you're nineteen or less hours, then there are no health insurance or anything like that.
And these are policies, so that's something that can change. I know there's been conversation, kind of, the moving scale is hours and everything and whether it's prorated on the, not, not only on the time off benefits, but also the health benefits and, and how that manages. And now that we have more staff, it's something that down the line, maybe we can look at. But right now, for kind of codifying what we have
Yeah.
is this.
Yes. Chapter two, administrative information. Recruitment and hiring is pretty standard now that there's an HR office. Most, if not all, of the job postings and everything end up coming through my office and we're trying to standardize everything. Not all departments, but plenty of departments do require background checks and queries and the CBAs all have kind of designated requirements for those. Personnel records, again, now that we have a human resource office, personnel records are making their way over and I'm working with department heads to really kind of go through what their standard practices have been in terms of keeping personnel information in files and making their way over to my office. Two point four, mandatory annual performance review. This is new, this is fun. Mandatory is kind of a scary word, but it really just means we're doing it and we're gonna keep doing it. I know in the past, there have been reviews, there have been reviews for department heads, things like that. But for some reason, it was one or two years and then they went away. So we're really excited to, to do these and we're going to also work towards tying an employees, and I think this is, goes into it a little bit, an employees sort of step of sorts to these annual performance reviews, which will also hopefully give staff a, a, a way to, an expectation. I know if I do this, I know if this works out, I know what's coming. So the idea with the annual performance review, we'll have an evaluation sheet. It really won't be burdensome to the department heads, very little writing, it won't be a five paragraph essay or anything. It'll be a pretty standard, you know, one through five kind of scale, the employee does this, 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 this. Anytime, we're still working on a few drafts, but anytime an employee gets sort of below satisfactory for a section, there will be required comments from the department head, so we can get a little more information out of them. And if the overall performance evaluation review, for some reason, is noting that the employee's overall performance is below satisfactory, that employee will come in, meet with myself, meet with the department head and we'll work on a performance improvement plan and set up a date for a six-month evaluation after this annual. But ultimately, you know, if that, if, if none of that is the case, it'll be two sets of evaluations, a self-evaluation for the employee to fill out. Again, just a great way to get some feedback about their, how their time's going, their time in the department, if they have any questions, anything like that. The department head will be performing their department head evaluation. And then they'll meet with myself, the HR office, to kind of go over it. So it also will make sure that the whole process, the meeting, the discussion with the employee, everything is kind of as well-rounded as possible. It doesn't feel like you're just kind of handing someone a piece of paper and saying, this is what I think of the work you're doing and, and we've done our job and we can check it off and leave. It's really supposed to be an important part of an employee knowing, you know, how they're doing in terms of the expectations for them. And then also, we want to know how the employees feel about their advancements, opportunities, the things they'd like to look, you know, look forward to and the things they might be, you know, a little influx about. And then the goal is that then again, this evaluation every year would kind of determine them being able to get that step up on the pay scale, which would be great and a great way for people to know what they're going for. There any questions on that one?
A couple of questions.
Yeah.
But I know there's another section two, so I don't wanna.
I know, there's a lot going on.
Just looking through, my, I guess, my first one, I just want to point out where it says regarding the performance improvement plans and personnel policy seven point five.
Yes, is that off?
I see seven point four is annual performance evaluations, but there is no number five section that talks about the performance improvement.
Nope, this is great, this is why we're doing these things. Thank you.
So I just was curious, I, I'd like to read what that process is. You had mentioned the, the, the evaluation form that's gonna be filled out. I understand not wanting to be a burden to department heads. You said, is there only gonna be comment if they feel they're not meeting certain requirements?
I think the goal will be, there'll be more comment required if they're not meeting certain requirements. They'll still be the opportunity to comment and at the end of the form, there would, there'll definitely be a spot for kind of general feedback, comments, things like that. We don't want to discourage them from writing anything. I just, I don't want department heads, especially some departments, will end up having to write quite a few of them, you know, potentially in the same month or two. I just don't want them to feel obligated to write more than they feel like they need to write. If somebody, if they are just so pleased with somebody and they've worked for them for five or six years and they're like, they're doing everything the way that I expect them to, if they think that kind of a, a check is, is gonna do the trick.
So, how, can you tell me, how's the performance review tied into the step increases? Like, I, I know some, you know, unions separate, but for these, we're talking non-union here. So are they gonna say you have to meet a certain performance before you're eligible to the next step increase? Or is there just an automatic, something that they just?
Yeah, so Jen, I, so there is a seven point four, I, I think that was just a typo that
It is typo, I'm sorry.
in the previous one. So seven point four is the actual policy for performance evaluation, so.
Yeah, there's just nothing in here about the actual performance improvement plan.
Yeah, so I, that's actually, I think, an employee discipline somewhere else. So there's a lot of references to other policies here, but I think the overall idea of, you know, we've all been through performance reviews. Maybe Nocas area, you had your own business, you revered yourself. But, you know, I think you have a candid discussion with your supervisor. And we kind of hopefully follow that formal template and, and at the end of the day, there's kind of the recommendation for successful, quote-unquote, successful performance review based off of some objective criteria. And then that is forwarded to Ellie and myself and that's where we, you know, kind of determine if it's appropriate for the, the step increase. So, you know, ideally in a, in a perfect environment, we have the COLA and then there is something that you can earn through successful performance and that's that step.
Okay.
Right, so that's kind of what we're looking in, in terms of evaluating it. We'll likely use kind of a, a standard template, essentially for, for both the staff and, and the department head manager.
So, kind of where I was going with it is I, having been in a position to do many of these myself, I, I think it's just as important to document specific examples and evidence that they're doing a good job. I don't think it's, in my mind, it's not, it's not a valuable piece of information, just to have a whole bunch of check boxes that, yes, I think you're doing your, your job. You know, being able to, if somebody new comes in, being able to go back and see a, a history that actually has
Right.
positive or constructive criticism in it, I think is important. So I, that's just
Yeah.
me just adding to that. I'd like to be able to see something that validates you're doing what we expect you, so you do qualify for what we'd like to recommend for you.
Documenting the good as well as any constructive criticism, yeah.
Yes, because I've, again, experienced many, many people that just do a mediocre job, they do the bare minimum, but somehow they just keep getting and you really want to make sure that they're, you know, putting their best foot forward to get the really good step increases or whatever, however it works.
Yeah.
And Ellie, on the, under the, on page ten, under the, I think the personnel policy disciplinary action in ARPAK is eight point eight and then the dispute resolution is eight point nine.
Thank you.
So I, you guys probably have done a few iterations and.
That's exactly what it is and it was, my eyeballs trying to match it all up, so.
No, that's fine.
No, but thank you, these are good, this is good.
Jen, I like that comment also as far as documenting.
Yeah. Yeah, and it may not go into the detail I intended it to in forty-two with more detail, but the goal is that the department head will meet with HR after their evaluation to kind of discuss what they've done. And so that would be another level as well of kind of documentation and being able to have a conversation about it and say, you know, can you tell me a little bit more about how you feel about that? And a little more interaction. It's kind of, you know, it's, it can be a lot, but I think we're trying to move towards an operation sort of that works really collaboratively and discusses these things.
Yeah, absolutely.
This is the disciplinary action and appeal process. This is, again, really standard, but we're working towards, really just following kind of the general principles of progressive discipline and getting everybody kind of on the same page. One of the things, obviously, I reiterate to everyone is, as we just talked about, document, document, document. So we're working on things like that. But this kind of gives, and then like I said, the, the, on whatever page, dis, uh, I can't say the word. The action, for more details, there's a little more detail about kind of going into the verbal warnings, the written warnings, things like that.
So if you're in one oh seven, seems to be the disciplinary action. Eight point eight.
Yes, eight point eight.
And then the eight point nine follows that is the one eleven, page one eleven, is the dispute resolution.
Perfect, yeah. So this goes into a whole lot more detail, kind of just the guidelines that we're expecting everyone to follow. And then resignation, termination, exit interviews, again, same. We, you know, pretty standard, asking for two weeks, anyone who's voluntary, voluntarily resigning. And then we work with them and offer the opportunity for an exit interview, either in person, in writing, or even over the phone. And then we just have in here the basics of when an employee is terminated in any capacity, they'll receive a live paycheck on a termination date, which includes current wages, do it that date, shift differentials, everything like that. Just kind of given. Are there any other questions on chapter two?
I just want to highlight the importance of the exit interviews whenever possible. I know that's one of the areas that we were really lacking and just trying to find out, you know, where, if, if there are deficiencies, where the deficiencies may be.
Yeah, yep, and in the few that I've done since I've come, I've made sure to try to make sure that the outgoing employee is comfortable because obviously you always want to make sure they're comfortable and so we've discussed it, would you like to submit something in writing and things like that? And it's worked out really well. We've gotten some great feedback and had some great conversations. Chapter three, employee rights, FMLA. So this all is essentially, like I said, it's all a federal act. There is a note on the top, just to, to kind of remind everyone, because people can get confused, that the town of Rutland, and actually no municipality in Massachusetts as far as I know, has opted into PFML, which is paid family medical leave. That's the Massachusetts paid family medical leave. So sometimes people do get confused because they sound very much alike, but that is a different thing. And we have not opted in. FMLA, you don't opt into, it's federal law. So really eligible employees can take up to twelve unpaid work, work weeks, they can use their accrued benefits, vacations, sick time, anything like that to cover those weeks in a twelve-month period. We have put together an FMLA packet that department heads have, my office has, that essentially has the proper forms that they'll need to fill out. We ask for as much advance notice as possible, we know emergencies obviously happen. But primarily so that where the employee, whether it be a department head or just regular staff, does need to take leave intermittently, all at once, that as an employer, we're all, we're set up so that we're not kind of at a loss without them. The goal is to make sure that we're set up to function without, without you as important as you are, so you can go and take care of yourself, your family, whoever you need to take care of. Part of that really just, just is a lot of paperwork, but it's important. And so we do have a whole packet, like I said, that we give out and gives all sorts of information. We ask obviously for dates when we can expect them back. I do a check-in about halfway through an FMLA period if it's, if we know kind of the, the departure date and the arrival to just to make sure everything's working out great. And if we, there are any changes. I want the employee to also feel like they, like I said, that they have the freedom to do what they need to, to, to be healthy, but that we also can continue to function because that's what we have to do. Parental leave, again, a full-time employee with at least three months of service with the town may receive up to eight weeks of unpaid leave. This runs at the same time as FMLA, so it's not like you could get twelve weeks and eight weeks in one year, it runs together. But it's the same kind of concept. Are there any questions on either of those? These are sometimes the bigger ones. And then the last page there, harassment and sexual harassment. We have a policy, we had, we have a sexual harassment policy already. If you look at, of course, now I'm realizing all my numbers are probably wrong, so I apologize in advance for everything. But there's just in a, some addition, some additional language in there covering harassment that's not, you know, considered sexual harassment, but it's in there. Just a standard paragraph, Fair Labor Standards Act and overtime. We do require, what does it says in there? Overtime work really should be approved by department heads. You know, we have a lot of non-exempt staff, but as we talked about, their weekly hours are kind of dictated by the budget and so we don't have a lot of overtime opportunities. And the whistleblower act is Massachusetts law. I'm gonna try to not take a whole lot of time. Chapter four, same, it's pretty, pretty standard. Anyone have any questions on any of these?
Just to follow.
Yeah.
You, you have notes, but just to double-check the C policy numbers, because I think a few of those are
Yeah, thank you.
off a little bit by one or two.
Nope, they are. The standard of conduct, again, and there's more detail in the, in the professional conduct piece, but that's also, a code of conduct is something that the town have, are, we have as well. Chapter five, classification and compensation. We are working towards making sure we have job descriptions. Some of the positions that have been around for a long time, we are putting them together with department heads and the current staff. Any jobs that are, that have kind of come about in the past few years, we do have job descriptions, we're working on those. And that goes along with classification plan, bless you, and reclassification plan. This is just again, kind of standard, but it goes into, as we kind of talked about, you know, after evaluations, as things change, as the operations of the town change, we're gonna find that there's gonna be some staff members that, or, or even positions that need to take on different roles and be reclassified either, you know, financially or also just in general changing of job descriptions. And that all kind of goes into the detail there. Everything else is pretty standard. Are there any questions in this section?
I think just one thing for consideration is for the job description, sometimes we'll hire at one job description, but then as the employee is there longer, and I think you're speaking to this as far as steps and everything, but sometimes when a person might leave, that the job description is much different than what they were hired at. And so what makes sense as far as a new hire, do we start at the original or do we need to adjust the job description? So I think you, you kind of capture it, but just something that I think we all need to be mindful of.
Yeah, I mean, and especially as, as staff members are here and here for a long time and become more ingrained in the operation and their department. Inevitably, exactly, and it's, it's never as clear as saying, oh, great, you're ready to do this job now, so you're gonna put this hat on. And that is something we're, we're working on. And, and something we're working on because I think it's important as a personnel office to have succession plans for departments and, and for staff. And I think that a lot of roles inevitably looked one way, you know, ten, fifteen years ago when, when those jobs were started. But they'll look different as we move forward. Chapter six, benefits and working conditions. Again, pretty standard, sick leave just goes into not more detail about FMLA, but it references back to the FMLA paperwork and packet. The sick leave policy was something we already had, but the FMLA packet itself is new just to reference what kind of other towns in federal law dictate.
Ellie?
Mm-hmm.
I may?
Yeah.
On six one, the numbers that are there. That was from old policy that just got, or a previous policy that got carried over?
Yes.
For example, sick will accumulate to a maximum of fourteen hundred hours. That was standard before?
Yes, yep.
That's the hundred and seventy-five days.
And that's the same as, exactly, that's what we discussed in earlier. But it's just, it reads differently. And sick leave is, in terms of what you can accumulate, I mean, what you accumulate each year is prorated to the number of hours in your regular schedule. Bereavement, we added a day to each of these from previous policy. And we're doing that as we move forward with unions as well. And we did add step-children in addition to child. We just wanted to make it more inclusive and certainly, you know, more relevant.
We added because?
What, the word, the days?
Yeah.
We just didn't feel that it was, it was an old policy, we didn't feel that it, that it, I mean, if your spouse, domestic partner, child, stepchild, parent or sibling passes away, we thought, we thought five days, we thought six days was better than five days.
And there's no other benefit that they could use for that?
Or there are crewed benefits.
There's nothing else that they could use for that then?
They could, they could, if they had to take more than six days, they could use accrued leave.
But if they had to take more than five days, they could use sick leave, right? Or whatever.
Sure.
I'm sitting in a chair looking at from a financial standpoint.
Yeah.
And the cost to the town, somebody has to fill in when they're out or leave and we're paying for that. And I'm, I'm not arguing the point, I'm just saying, if it worked all years and there was no complaint, why did we increase?
Well, so this was actually introduced, I think, with the recent dispatch contract. And that was based off of feedback, not only from dispatchers, but also just other town employees. That was something that we offered proactively, based off of feedback, recognizing that, you know, when you're going through this time, it's probably one of the worst things that'll ever happen, whether, especially for six days, death of a spouse, domestic partner, child, stepchild, parent or sibling. That's like the worst thing, right? So trying to, you know, I think be a little bit more understanding for our employees' needs and, and offer something to make sure they're comfortable during this challenging time. But of course, if they need more than that, they can utilize all the other time that they have accrued as well.
Good.
And it's, for most, for these positions, we're not hiring a, a temp or something that's, existing staff is filling in, whether that's in an overtime or an, you know, a department head expects, expected to take on the additional work or, or whatever. It's not that we're going out and hiring a temp or, or a, a separate employee or something.
The holiday section, I, another typo was when I was reformatting this table. It is missing two holidays and it's not two new holidays, it's two holidays that we have always given. But it was, again, me formatting a table and I forgot them. So it does not have Patriots' Day on it, so I will in the final draft add Patriots' Day. And we do give the day after Thanksgiving. And again, none of this is. And again, none of this is different than anything. Um we've had the most recent change to this, I believe, in terms of these holidays was adding Juneteenth two years ago, recently. Um so if you wanna make a note on that, like I said, we'll say Patriot's Day and the day after Thanksgiving. And these are just guidelines on, you know, how you take, how you can take that holiday.
Gotta go to the marathon, you know?
Interesting, yeah, yeah, it is, it is, exactly. Um vacation, we did add something new to vacation, which is so fun. Um everything above is sort of at the top is as is. Um the eligible vacation, two weeks after one full year, three weeks, four weeks, five weeks after fifteen full years. Um vacation is allotted July first of each year. But if you start after July one, your vacation for the year is prorated, obviously to the time that you that you started or the date, I started in October, so you know, my vacation was prorated to that. Um the. Vacation, and then same, um if you are working less than forty hours, more than twenty, um your prorated, your vacation is prorated as well based on the number of hours you work each week. Um and with the first pay period, but at all times, your accruals and how much you get are kind of included in your paycheck. So it's something that, and then employees can come to myself or the treasurer's office to confirm what they have. Um.
Question.
Yes.
All other departments, fire, dispatch, police, normally work forty hours a week to get these benefits. We're giving them to twenty hours a week. I find a little disparity there in terms of if we're gonna give this much, shouldn't it be for forty, and if we're gonna go to twenty, it should be less than what we're giving our other departments?
It's prorated, it's prorated.
Part time hours. With their permanent part time employees who are regularly scheduled to work twenty hours or more per week are eligible for prorated vacation based on the number of hours they are scheduled to work each week.
So it says two weeks after one full year of employment, so that's gonna be prorated?
Yep.
For what?
Based on the number of hours you work per week.
So if it's twenty, uh yeah, if it's twenty hours, they get half?
But only get a week.
So if they work a full twenty hours, they get two weeks?
No, one.
No, one week, because it's it's it's.
Fifty percent of forty.
Prorated.
Okay.
Um the new addition to this vacation policy um is rollover. We introduced this for a number of reasons, but primarily because the concept of user to lose it is just, believe it or not, not helpful for anyone. Um and especially for this town in May and June, when people are trying to use their vacation before they lose their vacation. Um and so we are suggesting or requesting that you can um roll up to fifty percent of your allotted annual vacation leave over past July one, um but you have to use it by December thirty first of that year. So it's just kind of a six month rollover window, just about. Um and a maximum cap of a hundred and fifty percent of whatever your allotment is based on the hours you work, you know, during the week and how long you've been employed. Whatever that cap is, you can hold a hundred and fifty percent at any time. Um and as always, vacation requests have to originate with your department head, um and the town administrator holds the authority to approve, change, deny any requests. So we put some examples there. Um but again, you know, to to roll it, you have to have not used it. So these numbers can be a little overwhelming, thinking someone's sitting around with seven and a half weeks of vacation. They could be if they didn't use any vacation at all in the whole year prior to.
I understand.
So somebody could effectively leave their position and we'd have to shell out seven and a half weeks worth of pay at one chunk?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you have to pay out vacation.
Unused, yeah.
Right, right.
But I I guess I I this seems overly complicated for me, the rollo, like I.
Sure.
All four are rollover.
Right, right.
But I don't know that I I that you have to use it within six months. That to me is just, if you have it, you should be able to use it whenever you want, regardless of the timeframe.
Right.
Like the way ours works is we earn however many weeks. And then we're, but we're capped at total in my bank, I can't earn more than a hundred and sixty hours.
Right.
And if I leave, and if I don't use it, I stop earning.
Right.
Until I go back below that.
Right.
So that at the end of the day, we're not stuck paying an ungodly amount of money.
Right.
When somebody decides to leave and they haven't used vacation time.
Right.
So I think this is something we should take a look at if there's the possibility that we might end up in a tough budget season, shelling out a very large chunk of money for unpaid unused vacation time.
Right.
That's just my concern with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, this was a, this is a benefit that looking at some other communities that have um, you know, some good vacation um or or benefits, um this is actually, you know, we wouldn't be the first community to do this. Um one of the challenging times, especially during this the summer, um is where, you know, especially for finance staff, they're closing on fiscal year, we're getting rid of, you know, um getting over town meeting, starting the new year. Um there's not a lot of opportunities for a lot of staff to be able to take the time off. So trying to fi- provide um some flexibility for people. Um you know, certainly, I think in our conversations with the department heads, we were kind of scheming out different things that that could happen with this. Um however, I think some of the feedback, especially from newer staff, is they really um recognizing that we're not in a position where we can offer the best pay. Um our benefits are are really where we're strong, whether it's health insurance, whether it's vacation. Um so trying to strengthen that, strengthen that as well. Um certainly, I think we can take a look and see if there's any others, like, you know. I don't think we'll be able to usurp the, if you leave, we have to pay you your vacation.
I'm not suggesting that we do, and I'm I'm not suggesting that we refuse what we're offering for vacation. But it's kind of one of those, we offer vacation.
Right.
Use it so you can take the time off that you need.
Right.
It's there, and again, avoid a very large payout if they leave.
Right.
Yeah, and I know, like, especially in the private sector, like, they don't have vacation leave, sick leave, it's just like PTO.
Right.
Um but unfortunately, we don't have that, um so they get away with not having to pay, for example, anything when you leave, because it's not vacation. Um which is, you know, probably why people like the working for a city or town, because they have those classified and defined things, so. Uh this was well received, I think, by by departments.
Mm-hmm.
Um and staff, so, but certainly if we wanna hold this and us, we can do it a little bit more, we could do that.
If I can back up, I'm I'm still not following you on this six six topic. I'm reading, all permanent employees working twenty hours or more per week are eligible for vacation accrual. It says nothing about prorating.
Paragraph three or four.
Oh, that's permanent, permanent part time employees.
They're 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 considered part time if they're under forty hours.
Then they should read to, it all should be, all permanent part time employees working twenty hours or more. Because you have two different classifications here based on the wording.
It it does, it says regularly scheduled to work twenty hours or more per week.
But it's just permanent part time.
We have two definitions for employees. We have permanent employees that are permanent part time, which are twenty hours a week. And then what's the, what's the, and then permanent full time, which is over thirty-two or whatever, thirty hours a week. That's always been in our policies.
Okay.
So they're permanent employees, right, they're not temps, they're not seasonal, they're permanent employees, but they're defined at um twenty or lower or twenty or higher, essentially.
Okay, so.
So they're permanent, so all these employees are permanent. However, um if they work twenty to whatever, it's prorated based off of the amount of hours they work. So forty gets the full.
Mm-hmm.
Two weeks of after the first year.
What you're looking at is for forty hour a week.
So that's something that is in the accounting already.
Yep.
That's in the formula, it's based on it, so, okay. All right.
Yeah, just the rollover is new.
And so when you first, when you, when you joined the town, well, I assume it's you now, um you essentially receive a sheet, your name, how many hours a week, what position you are, and then all of your benefits, what it looks like prorated. Um and that's something you know right from when you start.
Yep.
Uh and it's calculated and put into the payroll system, and then you kind of move on every year from there.
Okay, so it's prorated, all right.
Can I ask one more question? I'm sorry to delay, right?
Yeah.
Is it something where at the beginning of each year, they're, they have a bank of the time that they're owed?
To get it upfront.
So what happens if they leave and they've used more than, do we take that out of a last paycheck? Or are they guaranteed to have it? Like if if they've only, if they've worked for five years.
Mm-hmm.
And they took.
And they leave like January first, like six months into the.
They've taken all three weeks, but they haven't worked the entire fiscal year.
Yeah, so at at the time of of their no longer employment, uh we are required by a lot of payout, whatever they have for a balance. So if they have, let's let's say they're a um ten year employee, so they get four weeks, they've taken three, we have to pay them for that week that they have.
Even if it's, even if they haven't completed that.
There's nothing we can do?
No, because they, we we go by July one here, so.
We can't change that to get them to earn it on a monthly basis?
We could, certainly, I mean, so the concept of getting everything on July one was new to me when I first joined. I was so used to like, I think my previous community, I got three hours a month or something like that. You accrued it, and you get to the full.
Yep.
Two or three weeks, whatever it was. Uh but you know, it's something that's a little bit different here, so.
Just done that way. Because that's what's been done for so long, I believe in order to change it, we'd have to make it very clear in an adopted policy, because otherwise it's kind of considered past practice.
And I don't remember when it came up, I think some of the consideration was that because there's so many different work situations, that it became very cumbersome to try to track how everybody was accruing hours. Um and so I think it was the thought that front loading it was was beneficial to the department heads because everybody knew, the staff and department heads, because everybody knew what they had for the year. Um to your point, though, like if somebody leaves in the middle and.
We're shelling out money for a time that they didn't technically earn.
So, yeah.
Well, I mean, they they earn on July one from their years of service, so all the, I guess, previous years of service. But I think in terms of um if we were to change it, I think what we would have to do is essentially we, like the grandfathering situation, effective March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, all employees follow this policy, we'd almost have like two separate policies because of, you know, that term that's loved in the Department of Labor is past practice, right? So I think we'd be um in a challenging situation on that and certainly would be probably challenged at the labor board's um perspective, so.
And I think the essentially, well, no, I guess. I think some of it was especially that first year of employment. It's sometimes tricky if people are coming in but have vacation and everything scheduled before they took the position, how that works.
Um like before they have any vacation?
Right.
And they just take it unpaid, is that how it works right now?
No one, no one employed doesn't have vacation because they get it when they start.
But it says two weeks after one full year of employment, so what happens that first year?
It's prorated.
It's prorated.
So even though it says two weeks after one full, it it doesn't apply?
Accurate to me then.
In the first year, they still get vacation pay?
Which is fine if they wanna do that, but that means you get two weeks effective the date of your start, not after one year of employment. That doesn't read right to me, if that's how it's intended.
It doesn't, yeah.
I I just, it, I I get where it's going, it just doesn't sit well with me that we front load it and that there isn't anything that comes off of it. Again, to to Harry's point, thinking about, I mean, that's just us.
Right.
And and it's not like I I think any of the town employees are intentionally just, I'm gonna use all my vacation time in the first two months of the year and then I'm out of here.
Right.
It's just something.
Yeah.
It's it's a little, how it's outlined here is, I guess, not what I am used to and what I would expect for accruing and being paid out for unpaid time, so it's.
He, yes, I think this is one of the policies that existed, has existed for a period of time. I don't know how many years. Um and so that's kind of why it got pulled in this way.
Understood.
And that's because we're paying the employees currently in that way right now.
Yep.
But doesn't mean that it's not time to change something, so.
And just remember too that, you know, the collective bargaining agreements also have this language. So if we change something on the non union side, there's, you know, creating that disparity again. I think the original intent of putting these policies in is to try to bridge the gap that's happening between the union employees and non union. Um and this is a benefit that, especially the the rollover is something that we, you know, thought would be a kind of a, maybe not the cherry, but a sprinkle or two um for the non union employees.
So they have no argument with the rollover, just, yeah.
Yeah, no, and it's, and you know, when, with all these policies, but with something like this particularly, I mean, you you really have to put on all the different hats when you think about it, right? So when I look at it, primarily just because my job is a personnel officer and retaining staff and employing and hiring new staff, I think it's a great perk because I think that it gives people the opportunity to come work for us and say, great, and I have the freedom now to also take care of my family or my other obligations because I can commit to this job because I know I have this to fall back on. Um that doesn't mean it doesn't cost money, and it doesn't mean you don't put on the other hats to think about those things. Um but you know, it's, it, that's the the tricky balance, the kind of that a municipality also has to play with. Um so, yeah, it's kind of this fun one. Were there any other questions about vacation? Um and again, the policy always has been and continues to be, vacation, you know, requests go to department heads. Department heads who are taking vacation, the request goes to the town administrator. So there's that kind of check and balance of sorts. Um nothing else, honestly, in this section has really changed. Um again, just putting a lot of things kind of down and in writing that weren't down and in writing anywhere. Um information about FSAs, the health insurance, um a lot of it just kind of came at onboarding when you met with the treasurer collector. Um and if, you know, you've been here five years, you you kind of forget the onboarding. Um so we really wanted to put things like this um somewhere where it's always accessible by staff, no matter how long they've been here or anything like that. Um employee development, um obviously just wanna make sure to reincourage, you know, encourage that, you know, we're we're looking to help employees grow um and develop, and we just wanna encourage people to come to their department heads, um if they have ideas about conferences, seminars, things like that, obviously.
Can I back up to six nine?
Yeah, of course.
In in reading this, I don't see any cost factor here. I see where it says all eligible employees are entitled to participate.
Mm-hmm.
But it doesn't say who pays.
Oh, the breakdown?
I think it's whatever the IAC.
Yeah.
Is per. It's whatever, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Austin and Ally, whatever the the IAC, the Insurance Advisory Committee and the Board agree.
Right.
For whatever contract that that is.
Are you talking about for the six six nine?
Yeah.
Like how it doesn't say seventy-five, twenty-five?
Yeah, so the breakdown, uh because every time we change it, we'd have to change the policy. So every time the board adopts something, we'd have to change the policy, which is another vote. So um putting this in um just kind of speaks about the fact that you are offered these benefits, but for more details, you're gonna, you're gonna get that as a part of your onboarding packet anyways, and you see the breakdown.
Again, I find it, for me, somebody working twenty hours and gets seventy-five percent health insurance paid versus a full time employee getting the same thing, I just find disparity there.
I I do have to say that this is a town that doesn't offer a lot of full time employment opportunities for for non union employees.
Okay.
So I think that that, I think that if you were to take that benefit away or decrease it, you would find it hard to retain and employ people. That would be one of, um unless, you know, we could offer more forty hour a week positions.
So I didn't look at the hours that we have working.
Yeah.
There's a lot of people who can't, or we don't hire forty hour people.
Yeah, yeah. Um and yeah, most of the non unions are, or I would say, you know, it might be seventy percent are not forty hours, and those jobs aren't available forty hours. Um we did insert a little kind of broad um section about flexible schedules, especially, you know, the world's different now than it was even four or five years ago. Um Zoom, remote work, these things exist, um but obviously, it's really important. Um in a municipality, we are here to work for the residents and the public. We are public facing, most of our jobs are public facing. Um so we wanted to set some expectations about uh the importance of flexible schedules because obviously we wanna be an employer that is flexible um and can accommodate a good work life balance, but without jeopardizing um what we need to do as a town and work for the residents, so that just kind of breaks that down. Um again, it's it's nothing set in stone so much as you need to work with the department head and the town administrator if you need to work on a flexible schedule, and we need to make sure it's functional.
Um is this a big issue for towns?
Depends.
I I'm seeing, I you know, I know it's here for us, we have it in here for us, but is this a like an eighty percent of all the towns in the state? Put this flex issue in?
They're probably starting to.
I I I know a lot did, especially the pandemic, obviously for everyone, uh sparked it. Um just, I know like on on um in the Management Association, this was like a whole topic of how to best manage hybrid or remote work, um and you know, they recommended policy and make sure that you kind of check in on it, it's become a huge thing to be competitive against the private marketplace. Um I think we all probably have family members or friends that they're like completely at home, they're in their pajamas all day, um. But you know, the but public employees didn't have that benefit, you know, we were expected to be there, um whether it's to get the motor vehicle excise or or whatever it is, so this is a little bit of an opportunity to, we have some employees that are doing it right now, but to formalize that and make sure that we're managing it, so.
Okay. Interesting.
Speaking from personal experience, Harry, it's
It's nice.
I think I work in the clerk's office, so I'm working at home. O- okay, I have that flex, how can I work at home if I have to be in the clerk's? I'm I'm trying to look at all the all the situations here.
We um, I you know, and I think this policy speaks to it, but I I know that this came up again in the in that discussion is, you know, it's really important to make sure that the department head is also mindful of, now, we don't have very large departments, but mindful of making sure that there's adequate staff coverage, right? Cuz we're not gonna close the building because employees wanna work from, work from home, right? We still wanna make sure that it's open for people that need it. Um so if, you know, a couple of people or or one person in the treasure collector's office, for example, wants to work from home, we still wanna make sure that if someone comes in from eight to four thirty, there's someone, there's gonna be someone there to to answer the questions about tax bill, things like that. Um again, we don't have large departments, so, you know, the people that work remotely or hybrid um may be few and far between because it's really hard to get staff capacity there, but this is again a benefit that recognizing that we're in twenty twenty-four and we want to still be competitive, so, like, so for example, Friday, so I'm just gonna get there. Yeah, no, no, so like we're technically not open to the public on Fridays, right? Buildings are locked and closed, um. If people don't wanna come in, but they still wanna work, they should be able to work from home, right? Uh as long as they have the technology and whatever they need to be productive, so, and we do have some employees that do that right now on Fridays.
And voicemail can be checked remotely and email is accessible remotely, so it's not that there's a complete and total disconnect and out of touch, but I appreciate formalizing this so that there's a process for it, because I know kind of through the pandemic even, there were concerns that people weren't weren't monitoring the phone or emails as much as the expectations were, and I think that part of that was it was pandemic and part of it was there was a a gap in communication as to what the expectations were, so kind of formalizing it and allowing a process for it. Um cuz maybe you're working from home cuz you have a big project that you need and you don't wanna be disturbed. And that's okay, or maybe you're working from home because you have a sick child and you can still get everything done, but you just need to be there, and then you can be on the phone and on email.
Exactly, or school vacation, you know, it's like a, we we just, we'd rather if someone feels like they can stay home and get their work done, that they can get their work done instead of, you know, taking a day if that's not what they wanna do.
Ally, I think we'll finish up section six and then we'll pull up on title on chapter seven, cuz I think we have a lot here and I appreciate it.
Yep, nope, you got it, um and so the last piece is just something that I, it it already existed. Um health insurance incentive waiver program, um this is something that just, I believe, started last July. Um anybody who, an employee who um was on the insurance plan for the immediate twelve-month period um can apply, if they come off the insurance, they can actually apply for a waiver um and they can receive a certain amount of money, there's there's more details to it um in this, whether or not it's actually policy seven point eight um towards the back, um but it's something that a few people have have kind of taken advantage of, and it's it was kind of a cost cost-saving method, people who were on the insurance um and found another alternative, either whatever worked for them and their families, um were kind of got a benefit for leaving our coverage, um.
Quick question? They go off the insurance program, we pay them the incentive and then they wanna come back on the insurance program.
In, there's more details in this health insurance incentive waiver program, there are, there are um means they end up having to pay it back if it's in a certain period of ti- it's 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 all in there. No, 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 it's
I want it for a year, I'm off for a year, I come back on for a year, then I'm off for a year, and I still get the incentive.
No, it's all it's all in there, like, so you can't do it.
And it's a one-year, it's not a, it's a one-year.
Yeah, it's one year, it's not all the time, it's not, yeah, exactly, yep.
And where did those numbers come from?
The, that's a great question, I don't know because this was done last year. Um I would have to
Like the dates, do you mean?
No, the the payout numbers.
The payout numbers?
Uh that was, I think, accepted by the board at the time.
Yeah, I mean, it was definitely, it was definitely accepted last year, I just don't.
I've never heard of an incentive waiver program.
It's pretty common the state has it, interesting.
So it was interesting, like I, in my previous community, I was under twenty-six years old, so still on my, on my mom's health insurance. Um and we had, it wasn't quite a called a waiver, you know, if you weren't, you get an extra hundred dollars per paycheck.
If you didn't take the insurance, that's the other option, I think that is fairly common, is you get an incentive for not take, straight away, not taking the insurance, so.
Yeah, we don't do that, but that's exactly.
They've since changed that, and they used me as an example. They don't get that anymore.
No, interesting, okay, all right. Awesome, thank you, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Um so we have um the discussion, we've started the discussion of the personnel policies, thanks, Ally, I appreciate all the support. Um we have, if, is it okay to shuffle some things around, cuz I see we have Tim and I think that's Seth on and then we have Randy here also, so if we can kind of shuffle around, um if the board is amenable to that. Um I believe Tim is here since he's been on the longest, if we can um we have the op- the opportunity to appoint Tim Keenan um to Conservation Commission, this is to fill the slot that will will then open for reappointment um the end of this fiscal year. Um so it's a short, short timeframe appointment, um I believe we have the um letter of interest as well as the recommendation um of the chair in our packet.
Yeah, I think I shall do it.
So Tim, I'm not sure if you're on and can hear us, I don't know if you wanna introduce yourself, if you have anything to say. Um I see that you have a lot of construction and stormwater um experience, which I know is a is a increasing concern in the world of conservation.
I am here, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, uh yeah, I do, I have um broad experience with it from the construction end, um and I I saw the vacancy and I I thought I could offer my time and uh some experience to help out.
Thank you, and I think you attended a conservation meeting or so to introduce yourself and meet meet the commission, is that correct?
Yes.
Yep, thank you. Does the board have any questions um for Tim?
I just wondered, I I I, Tim, you're in stormwater?
You you work? No, I'm in road and bridge construction, um as part of my job, I'm a superintendent. And as part of my job, it's, you know, um implementing stormwater plans. Um not necessarily drafting them or drawing them up, but
Okay.
Building the job to those requirements and and dealing with some town conservation commissions at the same time. And uh and other agencies also, um but more from the construction end.
So you're you're kind of familiar with what builders have to go through then, too, kind of?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Does the board have any other questions or concerns? Okay, then, um seeing that we have a a letter of interest with um some perspective that I think could be beneficial to the Conservation um Commission, as well as a letter of uh support from the um chair, and I believe the whole commission was in support. Um I would take a motion to appoint Tim Keenan to Conservation, term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second a motion.
Motion and second, any other conversation? Hearing non-roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's in.
Lajray.
Galvin, I.
White man eye.
Thank you, Tim, um I think Conservation meets tomorrow night, seven o'clock here in the library, oh, six o'clock, uh, six o'clock here in the library. Um if you can get sworn in at the town clerk's office, um tomorrow eight thirty to four, I believe. Um and then you'll be good to go.
Okay, so I gotta stop at the town clerk's office tomorrow?
Yeah, if you can, and if i- if the timing doesn't work and you can just give a call and see if Anita or Ben are willing to work with you, meet you, sometimes they can meet you bef- right before a meeting or something also, they're usually pretty flexible if you can give them a call.
Okay, I can do that.
All right, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um welcome, um if we can then go to um item B under spec- new special business, accept conflict of in interest disclosure form, um Fire Chief Seth Knight. I believe Seth is online. Austin, do you?
Sure, yeah, so this is a, this is a um formality, so anytime um a public employee or public official um either has a conflict or an appearance of a conflict of interest through the uh ethics law, they're required to file disclosure with their appointing authority, in this case, it's a select board, and um that is also then filed with the town clerk's office. Uh in this case, the fire chief uh is disclosing his relationship, uh he does have uh outside employment um with an apparatus, a fire apparatus firm, um so he's disclosing that uh employment relationship to the board.
So Seth is declaring his um or disclosing his um interest and then states that um all dealings related to the town of Rutland will be handled by others within the department when needed or necessary. And then we, as the select board and appointing authority, um can vote to accept um the notice, and then it becomes just publicly noted and is filed and everything, it was noted that it was disclosed at the um uh time of employment, um and this is just kind of a a re-declaration, I suppose. There's a lot of, there's been a lot of turnover and stuff, is that accurate? Seth, if you're on?
Yes.
Yep.
Seth, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Um it says here, my service territory is Western Mass with some overlaps in Worcester County, is Rutland an overlap?
It is not.
Okay. I was thinking, in terms of we're looking to request a fire truck.
Yep.
And that's a big piece of apparatus.
Correct.
But you don't, you don't get involved in that one with Rutland?
I would not, um what I have done in the past is I would establish a um fire apparatus building committee, um they would meet uh with the various vendors and come up with specifications um that meet the department's needs. They would formulate, put it all together, uh make their recommendation to the procurement officer, uh which would be in this case, uh Austin uh for recommendations to bring forward to the board for purchase.
Okay. Um is there a lot of activity in Western Mass? I mean, those are some not very prosperous communities out there, so.
So so basically, my role is I'm an independent contractor, I write specifications for grants for departments and I bring them to various um fire truck manufacturers um that they're interested in and basically help them through the process to um facilitate the purchase, so that's just my role. Um I have not been involved since prior to COVID, uh but I just wanted to disclose this so everyone is fully aware.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions, comments, anything for the chief? Hearing none, then I would accept a motion to accept the for, the dis- um disclosure by a non-elected municipal employee of financial interest and determination by appointing authority of Fire Chief Seth Knight.
So moved.
Second a motion.
Motion and second, any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's in.
Lajray.
Galvin, I.
White man eye, thanks, Seth.
Thank you, have a great night.
Bye, Seth.
See you, Seth.
Um if we can move, sorry to keep moving around, if we can move around down to um S and G, I believe, which is the Agricultural Commission Appointments. Um we have letters of interest and care um AgCom recommendations to appoint Alexander Holib and Natalie Borison as alternate members for one-year terms to the Agricultural Commission. Um we have a letter of support from the chair um with the letters of interest from both Alexander and Natalie. I believe both individuals have attended at least a few meetings of AgCom um and seem to be invol- involved in wanting to learn more, and so the alternate, the one-year alternate is a great opportunity to kind of introduce new members of the community into um uh roles, which I appreciate, we have Tim joining AgCom and two newer members of the community um to AgCom. So does anybody have any questions or anything? Um I don't think nobody's on Zoom and I think Randy, you've met them and can speak if we have any specific questions, but can't answer for them. Um I would also then entertain a motion to appoint um Alexander.
I do have one question.
Okay.
I had attended one of your meetings and there weren't a lot of people there. So is it your feeling that when we approve these, that that'll give you a lot more flexibility in the committee?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe the meeting you attended, Harry, was the Economic Development, not the Ag Commission, unless I wasn't at the Ag Commission.
Oh, I thought it was the Ag I was at at one point, no?
No, you listened to me rant that night, Economic Development, I'm sorry.
I missed that, huh?
I mean, I can spread the fertilizer at both meetings, but.
Okay.
So then I would entertain a motion to appoint um Alexander uh and I'm sorry, I'm sure I'm mispronouncing Alexander's last name, Holib, and Natalie Borison to AgCom for uh each for one-year alternate member appointments.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second, any other conversation? Roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's in.
Lajray.
Galvin, I.
White man eye with appreciation, thank you, and again, thank you to, that's three new members uh that haven't been involved in boards and commissions up until now, so thank you. We're gonna have, I think, four people for Fourth of July committee at your next meeting, so. So thank you for all the outreach that you've been doing. It's amazing, I love it, yep. Thank you, and these are great opportunities for uh new commu- like me- members that are newer to the community, but also members that haven't that have lived in the community for a number of years and not served to get involved, so thank you for that big push, I know it's been, thank you. I'm glad it's working. Thank you, thank you, um and then Randy, I believe you're here for the Community Preservation Act. Um we have discussion regarding proposed adoption at annual town meeting, um do you want to speak to that?
It's an honor to be invited to come here tonight, thank you. So Randy Jordan, part of the Ag Commission, and uh we as the Ag Commission has felt very strongly in years past of some open space that has been offered to the town for various reasons, we haven't had an opportunity to get it. Other communities um have had the opportunity to purchase some of the land because there's been money available. And some of those avenues, it's not only the only avenue, but they've used CIP money to help venture that there.
CPI.
CP, yeah, thank you. CPI. So in turn, the Ag Commission felt very strongly this could be an avenue to help us physically do this. And in turn, uh, the Ag Commission is willing to take lead and, and do the homework and, and um have some informational meetings to all the committees and or um similar to they have finance or budget meetings upstairs here at the library doing it. We felt as a whole it's gonna give us an opportunity to raise um some extra money on our taxes. And we, the committee, are referring it to as a 401K, not a raise of uh on our tax bill or anything like that. It's an investment for a long-term investment. Part of this is, it's, it's controlled by the state. The state says you can raise anywhere from a half a percent to three percent onto your um.
Assess.
Certex.
Property tax.
Certex.
Don't use the word tax, everybody. But yes, essentially that's what it is. And essentially, and then you can have exemptions. You can have two different exemptions from what we understand, and we are still learning this. And Lear's been a great asset to this, but I'm just giving you a broad brush thing of this. You can have an exemption of, of zero dollars or you can have a hundred thousand. We initially thought it could be a wider range than that, but it's two options, zero to a hundred thousand. You can go anywhere from a half a percent to three percent. If you go to the three percent of the money, you have a greater opportunity to receive grants uh closer to a hundred percent of matching funds from the state. In turn, it also gives you a greater opportunity to receive grants when you apply for other grants that aren't related to that. Check the box off and say you have an opportunity to receive a, a grant because you're a member of this as well as saving the community. In turn, the money that we receive from this, whatever level we change, choose to do it, the Ag Commission is looking or leaning toward the direction of a hundred thousand dollar exemption, low-income exemption for um non-seniors and seniors as well. And those are uh parameters that are set up by the state and what that level is. I have those levels, but at this picture, I don't think we need to talk about that. So that, you know, makes it easier or more affordable for the people that are challenged financially to do that. Our average home price in Rutland is four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars on your average um property tax in the town of Rutland. And if we did the full three percent, because we, the Ag Commission feels it gives us greater opportunities. Some people disagree with us, but the committee as a whole feels three percent would be a greater uh feat to do that for matching funds from the state, closer to the hundred percent than if you did two percent or one percent, things like that. So we just did rough math on hundred thousand exemption, low-income exemption, and four hundred and twenty-seven thousand on the average. And we had the number of parcels in there. We would net um between four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I believe it's actually four seventy-one, not that I remember numbers great, but four hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars of income to come in from the town's people. And in turn, there, there is evidence out there, other communities that do three percent. Some of them have received a hundred percent funding in all their years of being involved with it. So potentially, not guaranteed, but potentially that could net us in the ne- neighborhood of nine hundred thousand dollars annually on this event. So it's an awful lot of money. Some people have asked, what are you gonna do with all the money? There are parameters set up with the money in there. And in turn, ten percent of it has to go to historical end of things. Half of it has to, oh, excuse me, ten percent has to go to open space and recreation space. Ten percent has to go to low-income housing. Five percent can go to uh administration cause to help implement this through to the assessor's office, from my understanding. The remaining sixty-five percent can be used in any one of those categories. We don't have to use this money, you know, in the course of the, you know, get all the money in today. We don't have to use it within the next year. We can let it accumulate. Research that we're looking into it, we assume if all that money sits there and is not used for a year or two, we can collect interest on it. And that would potentially go toward that end of things that we gotta do some homework on to completely understand that because some people are gonna ask if you spend money. One thing that the committee is going to try to do is use examples, and it's right on the state uh website, of how the money has been used by other committees. One way to talk about how the money is physically used, from my understanding, there is a committee set up, appointed by the select um men, people, persons.
Board.
Board, I'm sorry, I didn't know where it's going. Select board. And in turn, they're appoint a committee. The committee varies, but it, the planning board and uh three or four other committees that are on there. But I believe we can set parameters if we wanna put the Ag Commission on there or have some at-large members to do that. So then if someone wanted to spend money for the old fire station, right, historical building in town, we'd like to fix the driveway up there. And it's gonna cost fourteen thousand dollars to physically do it, right? We could go to the committee, ask the committee whether they believe in it. They get favorable support. In turn, it still has to go to the town meeting to be voted at it. So it's a committee process and then um a town's vote at a town meeting to do it. So it's a, it's a time thing, but it's not necessarily the select board that's making the decision of whether they can do it. They can have influence on it, but they can't say yes or no on it themselves. So there's some favorable to that, that some of the townspeople may disagree with these decisions for different reasons. In turn, they can plead their case to the committee and then the townspeople has the ability to vote on it. So I think there's some good things there. I think a very easy community to look at, right up the road to us, is Hubbardston. They've had CPA since two thousand and eight, I believe. And they've received over a million dollars from their townspeople that have come in. They're not at three percent, so their average of people coming in is about twen- I think they're twenty-five percent, twenty-seven percent on average of money coming in.
From the state.
From the state of a match. That isn't as critical today in a mindset of things, but I'm just talking about money and dollars a cents, right? They just put a slate roof on the library in the center of town. All the renovations that they physically have done in the town of Hubbardston in the last couple of years, those new sidewalks, the lights, the crosswalks, all that has been done through that money there that has come through there. Very key evidence. You've talked to other residents in the town of Hubbardston. They have talked about all the land, open space that they have purchased. When we talk about open space, it's not necessarily always sixty-one A, but there's other opportunities to do for open space land there. Yes, the Ag Commission often worries about sixty-one A, but that's not the only focus they're done. Hubbardston has bought hundreds and hundreds of acres that have been purchased through this fund of money that I wouldn't say Hubbardston has any more money than Rutland. They just have money in different envelopes that they have the opportunity to use on. I have a whole list. I have uh fifteen pages of the five, four towns that we have compared to of uh Philipston, Templeton, Hubbardston, and West Boylston. Our neighboring towns that we all can touch and relate and feel to that are similar to the town of Rutland. They've done it, uh most of them were in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine that have gone through, that are all positive things. There's very little negative that come out of it. One area that some, West Boylston has done a lot of their low-income housing is through the Housing Authority. Currently, we don't have a Housing Authority. Some of the money has been used for Habitat for Humanity to help out, finish the project, get to the finish line. So there are other avenues to do that. Every town is obligated to have ten percent low-income housing that we currently don't have in this town that we're way under that number, that we can help control that and help go in certainly that direction. Randy Jordan and the Ag Commission feels there is very little downside to doing this. I think what we gotta do for the town is we've gotta keep it simple and so we don't confuse people. Westminster just did this campaign a few years ago, and they took two years to do the process. And it was a citizen's petition that they got on there. We as a committee, I had a, a joint meeting here a little while ago. Uh, and we invited people to come here and we talked about it as a committee, uh as all the boards were invited to come. And we had a great attendance. We had twenty people there at that different meeting. We had some good questions. There wasn't a lot of questions. It was taped, so I believe it's available on our, our uh website that's available to see it. We had a relatively good meeting. We had some interaction and questions going back forth. There were some questions that came out of there that we've got answered and we're still working on some additional meetings there to go there. I think this is an opportunity of a lifetime that the town of Rutland is missing on it. I realize no one has any money to do anything. I have a quote from somebody that says, once their uh CPA money had started in their hometown, their tax rate was here. After a couple of years or even the first year, it started to diminish. Even though their tax rate went down and our tax rate fluctuates here in the town of Rutland, depends on the value of your homes and money and all that. It all takes a certain amount of money to do it. But the quote was, our taxes have gone down at our household, forget the values and all the level in there. In turn, I've said something wrong. He's coming to the room. I apologize.
Oh, you have something wrong.
In turn, the value has come down at their personal home taxes of out-of-pocket in today's age. That's quite a feat to, that was said to me as an individual, as a member that I had bumped tune to here in this community. That doesn't live in this community, but they work in this community. And they said that going forward. So the Ag Commission is going around and we're asking different committees to think about it, talk about it. And essentially, we'd like to have a vote of support for this going forward. Because our ultimate goal on May eleventh at the annual town meeting, we'd like to present this. I think, which hasn't been completely determined, I'd like the selectmen to potentially post the article as it. You can say what you want, but the Ag Commission is willing to be the lead cheerleader on this and try to do all the informational and be the front people uh leading the campaign forward. But I believe it holds more merit coming from the selectmen if you agree with the philosophy we're doing. Going to that meeting, we'd like to have um words in there of the direction that we'd like to go. We go to the meeting, we're all in favor of three percent, and it's going sideways and everybody's in favor of it, but they wanna do two percent, right? They have the opportunity, to the best of my knowledge, at the annual town meeting to say, hey, we'd like to make an amendment of this and we'd like to do two percent instead of three percent. You have that opportunity. We have to bring it up at a town meeting. We have to have a favorable vote. And then we have to go to a, a ballot, which there would be a ballot at the presidential in November, which would be greater than sixty days afterwards that I don't necessarily understand to physically do it. So you need a favorable vote at both of them to do it. For some reason, if we get an unfavorable vote at the annual town meeting, we can always do a citizen's petition to bring it forward if we choose to, uh going forward to the uh ballot in November if we choose to, to do that. We are kind of a half-full-of-milk kind of outfit, and we'd like to go forward with a positive reaction and try to get it there. Some of the philosophy that we felt going to an annual town meeting, we have the ability to answer questions, educate people before and during the meeting if we need to. We don't choose to make it a long, drawn-out meeting. We'd like to iron out all the things in the questions before the meeting with the informational meetings that we're likely to have going forward. If there are some unanswered questions, we could probably have somebody on the phone from the state committee to be able to answer it. They're not in a position to come answer it. Um, I think it's going better than I anticipated at this early stage in the thing. The Ag Commission has done some, moved some mountains in years past on different things in this town. And I think we've had some opportunities that we could have or should have moved on. And if there was money available in a certain envelope, as my mother always used to do as a child growing up, if there was money in our envelope to have saved the Davis property down here years ago, we may have been able in a different position to say, okay, here's the money. Do you wanna do it or not? And it would have been an easier yes than, hey, we just can't afford it today and we have that money to be spent in a different direction to do it. So there's opportunities that I feel as an Ag Commission member that we have missed in the past time. Everybody's concerned with, brief examples, Historical Society a few years ago had to need a new roof. We could get a new roof. Playground over here on Memorial Field is challenged and could be used some renovations. That could be improved. We could do a new recreational field that the town of Rutland desperately needs. We could do a recreational field or purchase some land to put a ball field up and create some funding to do that. There's a lot of free, I won't say free money, but there's money to be reinvested as in my, our 401K program that is matched by the state to help fund this. That money is available and other people are gonna get it. There's a hundred and ninety-two communities in the town, uh state of Massachusetts that are already benefiting from this.
A ninety-six.
I'd like to be a hundred and ninety-seventh one going forward. Happy to answer questions. I certainly don't know them all, but I'll do our very best to it.
So I just wanted to clarify a little bit. The one hundred thousand dollar exemption would be a hundred thousand dollars off everyone's, every um uh residential property valuation would automatically have a hundred thousand dollars deducted from. Um, the town does not have to make that up or anything. That's just to calculate the, the surcharge. The, the dollar amount surcharge would be off that hun- so our average is four twenty-seven. Um, the hundred thousand dollars off would put it down to three twenty-seven. Um, and then the annual tax rate currently is fourteen point eight-three, I think. And then it would be um that calculation and three percent is what I think AgCom is proposing. Um, so that was one of the conversa- one of the que- questions was, is the town responsible for making up that hundred thousand dollar exemption? And we're not. It's solely for calculating the surcharge. It's not the, the real tax assessment, real property tax.
So one thing that I left out and she just brought it to my attention is, if we did three percent, hundred thousand exemption, low income in there, I think, oh no, I did tell you how much money was. Oh, it was gonna cost each household a hundred and forty-seven dollars annually. That would add up to the four hundred and fifty, four hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars of income. So we did take it, take in mind and part of our calculation of some of our initial thinking was, what's affordable for most homes, right? I'm sorry to say, but a hundred and forty-seven dollars won't take Randy and three of his friends out to dinner for one evening. So that's how we looked at it. You know, you could do your cup of coffee. You could do whatever you wanted to do. There's ways that each household could come up with that money to do it. But I think it's the savings on the other end that we don't have to go out and, and borrow money to gr- make it greater than a hundred and forty-seven uh dollar annual increase going forward to do it.
And I mean, I can speak solely for myself. I fully support it. I think there's been a, a number of opportunities over the course of years since we've lived in town that something like this would have been very beneficial to have. It's something that we hear from residents over and over and over again through master plan, through open space, through town center study, that they want CPA, that they want to be able to have some of their money go to something that is very important to them. And that's preserving open space and recreation and historic. And there's a lot of opportunities on the affordable housing side to kind of get us where we, closer to where we should be in a very town-friendly manner. Um, and I think that that's very important because we can use it to establish some of the, the best practices, um housing production plans and housing autho- uh housing authorities and everything. So I think it's something that we've heard from the community in a lot of different aspects that it's important to them. So the ballot question, or the town meeting question is, um, the warrant article would simply to basically authorize the, the select board to place it as a ballot question at the November meeting. Um, and then the ballot question is what actually holds the weight at, as far as if it passes or not. So the town meeting needs an affirmative vote to place the article on the, the annual, the oh, the November election. Um, but the No- November election is where it's a pass fail. Does the board have questions, comments? Let me get to the board first.
I, I echo exactly what Leah has said. And to me, this is an opportunity, like you said, for all those things that the town residents have expressed that they want, that we just have not been in a financial position to provide. And this is a mechanism to have their contribution go to a specific place that's intended for the pieces that they really want, that we otherwise would not be able to afford. So I echo everything Leah said and I fully support it as well.
And you could apply it, you said, to fields and stuff, but you couldn't apply it to structures?
So it depends a little bit. Um, there's a lot of criteria and that's some of establishing uh the Community Preservation Committee within town. Um, there's a lot of resources online as to what is allowable and what is not allowable. Um, and that's some of the work that the, the. Um, and that's some of the work that the the committee would do to kind of tease out and and work with the um Community Preservation Coalition guys. To to ensure that the projects are allowable. Um, DOR is a really good resource also, um, and obviously, if there's administrative support time um allocated to uh, you know, Tamika Austin. Amy and the assessors, Ta- you know, Ta and Amy and the assessors, um, to ensure that there there is it. That it's being used appropriately, but there is opportunity for some existing pieces.
So existing repairs.
For, well, yeah, for, like, we could use, use it for repairs to the pool, the pool house, anything with the pool. We could even use it, as long as the structure supports the use of the open space, like, we could put a a, install a bathroom on the field, not a porta potty. And it, that goes to support the use of that rec field open space. We could not use it to create an indoor recreation facility, anything that has indoor use, it's all about supporting the use of outdoors. So it's, it's just about.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna come down to the town whether or not they want it, right? They're gonna vote yea or nay. Cause like you said, they're gonna see it as more money they have to, you know.
Four oh one K.
They're investing in their town.
That's a nice term, Randy.
Yeah.
I don't think that's gonna sell in the town.
Again, let the town vote if they want it, then.
You know, the, I look at it as it's a very valuable program. I think the town should have done it a long time ago. But you are climbing Mount Everest here when it comes to the financial issues for the town. So it has to be done properly. We just passed two and a half last year, I'm gonna reiterate that again. They, we, the town believed that that money was gonna last us two to two and a half years. That we wouldn't have to go out and start scavenging for money. Our budget is now a hundred thousand dollars in the hole. The sewer problems and water, if, unless that's wrong, Austin, we're about eight hundred thousand, that we need to make up in the budget, right? I'm gonna, okay. And now our sewer rates have gone up substantially over the last two years. And we've got thirty-five percent of our population, which is basically on a fixed income. So, if you can explain to them how they can afford this, not at three percent. Cause I don't think they'll go for that, but that's my personal opinion, how they can afford this, then I think it'll sell. I, I like the idea, I support it, I don't know if this year is the time to do it. I hear you, I just don't know, we're.
I respectfully disagree with you.
That's okay.
In the essence of time. It was twenty years ago that I believe, back Mr. Williams's day, that they had tried to do uh this particular program. And for whatever reason, I don't know all the particulars of why it didn't pass then. If you look at the opportunities since two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, that other communities have done with this program. It is just money that we're throwing out the door. I understand that there are financial concerns with many of the households, you know the numbers far better than I do in this town of what people can afford and what they can't afford. At the end of the day, people are tired of hearing that we don't have any money, right? And and I I agree with you. But at the end of the day, if we can create them and show them a value for the dollar that they're going to get, that they're gonna have a little bit more influence or control over, I think we can win this battle. And I am willing to take the challenge to climb Mount Everest.
And I'm glad, I'm not saying it's not a great idea that we don't. What I'm saying is, if you want the town to buy into this, then you gotta give them a really good reason and not just say, well, you know, these are missed opportunities. Are we gonna fix, are we gonna, if we do this, here's where we're gonna put the money. The first hundred thousand's gonna go here, we see this need for this, we see, you gotta explain to them, not just that. We're gonna buy a piece of land and we're gonna sit on it for twenty years and by the way, if we wanna sell it, we have to get the state's approval to do it.
No, we don't need state approval.
That's not gonna fly.
We don't need state approval, it's just not, not to.
If you buy town land that is owned by the town. The state now ha- under that program, the state has to approve if you wanna sell that property, they do.
Well, we're not talking about property that's already owned by the town, we're talking about purchasing property so that we can.
Correctly, that becomes town-owned property.
Right.
But depending.
But we don't need state's permission to buy property.
It depends on what the restrictions are, if there's a APR restriction or a sixty-one A restriction, then.
Okay. Okay. No, I'm not talking about that. I am not talking about sixty-one A or APR, I am talking about.
Information that we'll learn.
Yes.
I just wanna add to, it, I don't know if you touched on it maybe briefly, just the, there are exemptions for low-income or low to um moderate-income seniors. Um, that would be filed through the assessor's office and the normal abatements and exemptions.
It's gotta be.
And that wouldn't, and that wouldn't be uh like our normal abatements and exemptions where essentially we're reducing our tax levy, they would just be exempt from the sur- surcharge altogether.
Well, Randy, wh- what are you asking of us tonight? Well, like, what, what are we?
Jump up and down and say yes.
Yeah.
No, no, what I'm asking of you tonight, right? Is 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 it's gonna be a long process to get there, right? But I think what I'm asking for you guys is to consider it, potentially say, it's a feasible idea to consider, right? And possibly give us, and I'm not certain if I can do this, but the Ag Commission doesn't have any clerical help and we're challenged. With the committee that we have of maybe needing some help to get some things on the website, to educate people of factual stuff or possibly send a letter out or two. Lear has helped us um some in going back and forth with the committee. I didn't know if the committee would consider if Tamika had a few moments in her day to help us in some way of things that I would not abuse. She's been very helpful in another situation I've spent endless hours on for this Ag Commission committee that we have. Um, dealt with a situation that you may or may not be aware of, but. So in turn, I'm asking for, I'm asking, I'm looking for support, I don't need support tonight. And I'm looking for uh clerical help to help us do some things and allow us to post something, some things, whether it's on the town website or give me direction, right? And I think we need to um get. From the meeting that we had on the nineteenth of March that a lot of people were at, is, there was very little negative, some questions, but a ton of positive, right? And there's some uncertainty of things that we don't know and the side effects of it and what the number is. We're, we're not, we're not here to determine whether it's one percent or three percent tonight, right? That's something that we gotta grow into, right? And we wanna give it our old college try. And respectfully, Harry says, jeez, we can afford one percent, but we can't afford three percent. And if we're gonna climb this mountain, I'd like to climb the mountain and shoot for the stars. And lose, then go for one and win easily. You can change it over time, that you can physically do that. But if we're gonna put the effort in to educate people the benefit of it. And those that can afford it to physically go forward, that we can do it. So I'm asking for support, I'm asking for a formal vote before then, and I'd like to get a unanimous of all the committees. I don't care whether three of you vote yes or five vote yes, but if your committee supports it. We've gotta have a philosophy of positive information coming out of everybody's mouth in regards to this forward. We can't create questions that people are gonna be concerned and have a deflate gate here on things. Please.
If, if I may, I just wanted to, I know we haven't talked about it yet, but based on the proposed calendar for opening and closing of the warrant. This would be the la- the only meeting that the board would have, where you would be able to decide if you were comfortable with placing a warrant article. For this particular matter.
So, I think, I mean, and I think part of it is the wanting access to be able to get outreach through the town website and everything. It's been until or unless uh. Um, I've, I felt that until or unless a board that has staff support votes in favor of it to to take advantage of that. That it was not fair to necessarily um put undue hours on staff that may not be a a unanimous group. Um, or or a, a positive group um for wanting that. Um, Peter, I know you had a question or?
Actually, I have two comments. Uh, number one, I had a conversation with Anita last week and I haven't talked to her this week yet. It was unclear to Anita that we can put it on the November ballot. Simply because that's a presidential ballot and that's normally locked by the state, but it.
CPC, CPC.
She's looking into that. The good news is there is a September primary. That state primary where it could go on, if it can't go on in November, so that's a timing question. The other thing you've, that people have to decide is, uh, and that would mean primarily you folks. I- is how that committee is formed and a bylaw needs to be written for the Community Preservation Committee. Cause that's a requirement of section five A. And that has, that has to define in law, is it appointed, is it elected, how many members, all of that has to go into that bylaw.
But we know a guy that can do bylaws pretty good, I believe, right?
You know a guy who's out of the business, who hopes to be out of the business. As it turns out, I have a, I actually wrote one a couple of years ago, but I haven't looked at it in a couple of years now. But for the bylaw committee, since they're just firing up. Uh, I, my gut tells me we would not need it. But if we, if it was decided to act on CPA at town meeting in May, I don't think we need the bylaw in May, I think we need it in November.
At the earliest, I think, because it, if it passes at the ballot in November. Then funds aren't available for any sort of distribution until at the, till, I I believe until the following fiscal year. So it could be the following May.
Is it following fiscal or the following calendar?
I think it's.
I don't know.
I don't know.
It's following something.
But, no, to your point, I think, I think, no.
No, but, but, but it does take time to recruit, to appoint.
I think the fall, I think the fall would be the ga- the aim there, but that's not a.
Yep.
A hindrance to this process.
That's a di- that's a detail, I recognize the focus, things are details about about timing.
Did some of the other committees have a planning board, conservation?
So, Paul, do you have any, I think.
I don't remember who, who, how, how it's.
No, I'm in agreement with the idea, I think it's a, I think it's a sound idea at this particular point in time. Finding out what Peter said about having to get a bylaw and get all that, um. Let's say judiciously approved, yeah, okay, I agree with that too.
So it sounds like, I mean, we, based on the town meeting um schedule, to to Tamika's point. This would be kind of be the first meeting that we would have the oppor- the first and only meeting that we would have the opportunity to agree that we're agreeing to place. As as a select board, a warrant article for that. And then um, we still have a little bit of time to work out the specifics of it, but what the the verbiage of the article is, but in in favor.
Essentially a placeholder.
Right, in favor of placing a CPA warrant article um for the May town meeting. Um, so I think we would need a, I would prefer to have a formal motion for that if the board is so amenable. Um, and as a placeholder, and then we have a little bit of time to work out the specifics of the language, I believe. Uh.
Just, quick thing, just, how many times has the select board had golden objectives and this has been on it? And how many surveys have ever gone out in this town for over the umpteen years? And it always comes back, the number one thing that the residents looking for is the open space, that's why they, what's drawing them in. So I feel that they're behind you a hundred percent, really.
So is, I would entertain a motion to um, uh, place a CPA article detailed to be ironed out. But to, as a placeholder for our May um annual town meeting warrant.
It's removed.
We have a motion, is there a second? Any other conversation, questions, concerns, um?
I just wanted all the particulars before I vote on it.
Well, I think that there's not gonna be a lot of particulars, it's just to get the pro- we're, we're not gonna be able to have a list of when we get the money, this is what we're gonna spend it on, that's all.
I don't mean that, I mean, I I would really like to know what the percentage is we agree on to put in that. I know Randy's pushing for three, and that's a nice dream, I just think it's gonna be tough for the town to vote for, so. I can't vote for something in good conscience where I don't know there are some posit- or some particulars there that I know to be fact. I don't wanna vote for something and then it ends up here, no, I I can't do that.
Well, we're not voting on the contents of what we would propose, right, just the, the article, right.
We're going to place it on the warrant.
No.
What are we gonna place it on the warrant for?
If I may, to clarify, this is not specifically to place it on the warrant, it's essentially to sponsor the warrant article. With that being said, we're still go- we're gonna get all of our article requests, I'm gonna compile them, they're gonna go to town council for review. Then they're gonna come back to the select board, I forget on the date, and then you guys are going to meet again to review, discuss and finalize all of the the warrant articles.
Okay.
And so, let's say hypothetically, that it goes in at three percent and the board gets it and it goes through review and it comes back eh with all the exemptions. And it comes back, legal review is fine, but the board says, hey, I support this, but I would rather have no exemptions and one percent. Then the board could make, make that decision.
Can make that change before you finalize the warrant.
Before we finalize the placement, um. So I think that that's kind of saying that we agree, it it gives AgCom some direction. Um, to say that, yes, this is a valuable use of of your time and the other boards and commissions' time. It gives staff some, some direction that, hey, we're supporting this, so please help us with the education piece.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and go that route.
Take about a month, I think the proposed uh timeline for the town meeting, you'd be signing the warrant on Tuesday, April sixteenth.
Yep. Yep.
So, we have a motion and a second to place as a, as a kind of sponsor placeholder. Give direction to ICOM and the various other boards and commissions and staff as well to be able to assist, obviously, it's not your full-time job. But.
So can I ask for clarification? You, right now, you have a motion on the floor to hold a place in the town warrant. Is it my impression that you, if you're going to put it on the warrant, and maybe I'll retract that idea with your reaction here. So if the Ag Commission does all the informational meetings, see what the townspeople are reading. Gets closer to the town meeting where we gotta actually put the verbiage on the town warrant. And the Ag Commission feels that our best interest is three percent, but some people in front of me says one percent is better. Just using this as an example, right? Ultimately, who has the final say what goes on the warrant article? Can you get, can you take it from a recommendation from the committee that's led the charge? And then vote on it as a board, so if one member says one percent or nothing, and the other four go yes, then how does it get placed?
Yeah, so I think that that's the conversation, it would come from the Ag Commission, submitted as what the feedback from the community is. And then we as a board would have the conversation and either vote to place it as presented by Ag Commission at the re- recommendation of Ag Commission. And if there's conversation as to, well, I would really sup- and support it, the majority says yes, three percent, let's go. And, or the majority says no, but I would, I could support one percent or something. Then there's that conversation and then at the floor, at town meeting, it can also be amended, right?
So the only comment that I have with that, I understand that now, thank you, is if we, if the Ag Commission says three percent. The majority of you think something less than three percent is. It goes to the town meeting, everybody's super rah 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 about whatever percentage goes forward. But yet, some people understand the advantage of going to three percent because of the matching grant and other opportunities of money coming in. It's much difficult to bring it from a lower number to three percent. If you're negotiating a car, you never start down here to end up here, that's all I'm saying.
And I will say, in talking to other communities that have CPA, um, anecdotally, that this has been, um. Many, many, many have said that they, they went low to get it in with the the thought that they could increase it. And they wish that they would have done, that it was going to be education to get the word out no matter what, and they wish that they would have went in with three. Because it's a re-education every time you try to do it. And you can always lower, after you get it in at three, after five years, if you want to lower it, it can go to a town meeting and be lowered. Um, so that's a additional feedback. So I would put that kind of just as for conversation, but I think right now the motion is as a holder. For to to be able to move forward with education and.
Yeah, I just wanna say one thing, moving forward, I, I mean, I agree with the idea, but I think we better come up with some sp- specifics moving forward as far as like. It's just gonna be a bank account where people, you know, a group of people can spend it any way they want, I don't think it's gonna vault through. If you say it's for a ball field, if you say it's for something specific, the senior set or whatever it is. If you say it's for a ball field, if you say it's for something specific, the senior set or whatever it is, I think we'll have a better chance of a push and a throw, other than just a a three percent tax, cause that's how they're gonna see it.
And I think we talked about that.
People aren't stupid, they know what it is, right?
I think we talked about that at the AgCom meeting where we we said we should come up with a list of potential projects that
Yeah.
we could fund through the, I mean, the the woodhouse roof is a project that could have been done that we wouldn't have had to accommodate via our town budget.
I I think part of our informational meetings that we were gonna do is I was gonna list some examples that I have here with us
Things like that, just.
that are public information to make people aware about other communities have done.
Yep.
And then I was going to use some examples of things that we maybe missed opportunities and potential future. I don't wanna tie my philosophy, which I can, I'm open-minded and I can be changed, right? But I don't wanna say, hey, next year we can do X Y Z with a hundred thou- you know, one member uh was there and says, what are these things you're likely to spend? I don't wanna spend all that money the first year, you know what I'm saying? I'd like to have some that we have a greater opportunity when a bigger parcel comes up or a bigger project comes up. The other thing that I didn't say earlier that is non-relevant of what you're voting on, but for example, the Rufus Putnam, um.
House.
House down here is a historical building. People come to this town sometimes just to see that. It doesn't have to be town-owned to do it, it can go before the committee to help benefit non-town things, it, but it's gonna be a vote of the town.
Yeah.
To physically do it, but I'm just saying, I'm giving you other examples, Tom, right?
Yeah, I know, that's gonna be a tough sell.
Where it can be dealt, right?
Yeah.
I will name the field after you, Tom, if we get this passed through, okay?
I don't need it named after me, Randy, I just want the field, Tom.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second to place as a placeholder, um any other conversation? Roll call, Harry.
Sackman, I.
Pardon me, Matt's an eye.
Matt, your eye.
Your eye.
White man, I. So. Thank you, guys, and thank you, ICOM, um I'll put out there again, um, the Community Preservation Coalition, um. It's communitypreservationcoalition.org is a NGO website that pretty much has as much information as you want, as many databases as you want to go in and and look at other communities, other projects that they have done, it talks about the funding pieces and um everything, so there's, you can spend hours getting lost on there, so. Thank you.
So direction from the select board, please, is, so if the committee works with Tamika to help get some things on the website to do it. How do you want it put on the website? Do you want it to be its own page, do you want it to be the first thing that comes up? Because it's a hot topic that's coming on it, do you want it to be part of the Ag Commission, do you want it to be seventeen clicks down that Mr. Williams can't find? How would you like it?
I think, I mean, I don't, Tamika, I'm not one hundred percent sure on the inner workings of the website, I think having it kind of on the front page um as a a news and announcement or or somehow tagged there, um and then if it links to either the AgCom and or select board pages also, if it can be a few different places or if people are.
I can find a sweet spot for it that will, that people can find in different spots, wherever they look.
Yeah, like I said, I'm not sure on the backend of how it it works, but I think having it because it's going to be, I assume that plus when we do the warrant and everything, all of that is gonna be kind of hot topic, front and center, so.
Yes, what I was gonna say, um, I sent out an email to a couple of folks today. I created a page on the website that's just for town meetings, so that people have an easy place to go, they don't have to search for it. So this can go right on that town meeting page, but we can also link it to the AgCom page, we can, we can put under news and announcements, we can do an email blast to the people that subscribe to our news and announcement, we can put something on social media.
Maybe, maybe for Randy to make it look good, we should have like a movie screen, coming soon, you know? Capital preservation, capital preservation act, you know?
I can, I can make it scroll across the top, I've been looking for a reason.
So is that helpful? Is that helpful, Randy, more?
Yeah, so I, more or less, let Tamika take care of it, she'll do it right, you guys are okay with whatever, is my impression.
Yep. But keeping it kind of more places and more front and center accessible wise.
I mean, we 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 hope to do more than that, but that's that's a lot of places to do it, I think we have to get out and broaden our base of educating people.
Yep.
And more than just the website, but that's a a good place to get started to do it. We'll probably do some handouts or make them available and do our public meetings upstairs and go from there.
The more communication, the better.
Might might I recommend um maybe set setting up a meeting with Nancy Nichols to go to the council on aging um during the day, cause I know sometimes they don't necessarily like to come on the evenings, but maybe if you just went, like I know Austin does like a coffee chat and maybe just, cause, cause sometimes those are the folks that you really wanna get to, you know, buy into these types of things, um so maybe that would be another option.
Happy to, happy to do all that.
Yeah.
April twenty-sixth is my April coffee chat if you want to come.
Can I go with you?
You can do that.
Do they have hot cocoa?
I just wanna make sure though, um, so using town resources, we need to make sure they're educational rather than advocacy.
Yep, right.
We wanna avoid any
Right.
conflict of interest, so, um. Which a lot of towns do.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they have resources available on their town website, however, very similar with the override question, there were certain things the town staff could do, certain things you couldn't, because it was a political question, so.
Make them understand it's a vote and not us deciding, especially, you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
Right. Right.
And there, did you find, already find like FAQs?
Yeah, there's a.
There's a link, that's, that was part of the, okay.
Yeah, there was a whole, yeah, 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 there's a whole lot there, but we can kind of try to tease out as we hear from the community, other, you know,
That will help.
Rutland-specific questions, highlight those as well.
Yep.
And then do we, are we gonna ask for a recommendation for what sh- as a starting point for what we should discuss for the content of the article from AgCom? Or is that something that?
I think, I mean, I think kind of AgCom will get feedback from their their information sessions and then probably funnel it through our office and we'll have a sense as to what what they're thinking, um based on the feedback from from their meetings and everything, um.
Part of the intention that we also have is there isn't as many decisions as we thought there had to be, right?
Yeah.
We we, we know what our decision-making have to be, we have to determine the value of where we need to go, right? Obviously, you know that I'm leaning toward why, and I'm gonna try to gain more information about that, and if we don't have too much negative from the forums or people interacting with us about it, and we'll know what the pulse is, right? And and we're trying to go with getting it passed, right? And certainly echo Harry's in regards to, hey, maybe we can do better passing at one percent and then we can increase it if we need to, but yet try to weigh our options to do that, right? We're gonna get help from the CPA, there's there's two state people that do it and they used to come out and meet with us. But now there's so many committees, uh towns that are doing it now, it's difficult for them to do that. But they'll help us write the warrant articles, so the the words are legal and um not confusing for the people. My goal is to keep it simple, and I don't wanna get too deep into the weeds. Yes, I wanna get the answers, but I wanna be very broad-brushed, and I don't wanna hide anything from anybody, but I wanna get the answers that they get, but I don't wanna confuse the people. I feel what West Minister did was I did a great job, but there was awful lot of questions and it was real close to passing. I mean, but yet, they they missed it by a couple of points, right? And I think it was because of the questions that they had and the longer opportunity they do it. They had some interaction on the website, I don't know whether they can, we can set up a, you know, on the town website, whether we could have a question and answer period that somebody can answer the question, right? Hey, if this happens or what can do this, we talked about putting a calculator on there, hey, what's my home gonna cost? Can we put an interactive calculator, my house is seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, but we can show them how it gets there, I think people like that. I think things that we gotta need to do at the meeting that we saw at the last town meeting is either have it printed out beforehand or have it up on a screen that people can physically see it and don't have to, have to follow along. I don't wanna make a long evening out of this at the town meeting.
And I think the, there's been a couple of members of AgCom that have worked to kind of already develop a calculator and it's it's accurate, it's so, it's not that s- that staff or anyone would have to recreate that, as long as it can be linked somehow, so just.
I thank you for your support and looking forward to climbing Mount Everest.
Thanks, Randy.
That was the first time.
Thanks, Randy.
Thank you.
Um, so we've jumped all over, um going back to old business. Um, Austin, did you want to discuss the fiscal year twenty-five budget?
Sure, uh, yeah, so, um. We've had some joint meetings, we've had some just regular meetings with the finance committee, as you know, with the school numbers, so the school assessments and and where we are in that position, our um deficit for fiscal year twenty-five is, I'm gonna round up to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, discussions about this process with the finance committee, um. Finance committee is um essentially at a level where they are comfortable with using approximately three hundred thousand dollars in free cash and essentially telling myself and select board and town departments to figure out the rest of the funding uh source. Uh, we've talked in in previous meetings about uh use of ARPA, uh whether it's for this year, generate free cash. Um, a proposal that was discussed with the finance committee was, um, you know, using it as a revenue source for next year. Um, so at at that, at at this point, I'm just asking the board for what you're comfortable with in terms of, um the overall budget discussion and our funding sources, but also if there's a consideration for use of ARPA um for either any of the options that I've just mentioned, or any other creative funding source ideas that you may have, so.
So if I understood correctly from the end of FinCom, and I don't think they're meeting, I mean, it's been approved yet, but was that they were hoping to ask or hoping to see three hundred thousand dollars of free cash and then the remaining about five fifty-ish from ARPA um go into this uh year's revenue sources um with the thought that there's likely going to be movement on the state side, um increased funding, especially at the school, uh at the school level um and potentially UGA and other stuff, um we, the current budget did not take into any account the, any of the communities uh ha- uh units at the Heights property, um Harboclassic homes.
That's me.
Um, there was no income realized from that, and there was no income realized from the marijuana entities either. Um, so the thought was that that infusion, then there would be additional d- uh likely influxes of free cash that would that would clear to free cash next year, is that correct, I think? And that would, if we looked at three hundred-ish in free cash and five fifty-ish in ARPA, that would still leave, um like three fifty or four in ARPA, is that?
Uh, so our our free cash balance right now is seven fifty-seven.
Yep.
Four forty.
So that would be four fifty in free cash, and then if we use the five fifty-ish of ARPA, do you rem- I don't have it in front of, what the remaining?
Uh, yeah, so we still have unobligated, um, in terms of essentially unspent, there's, I'm gonna round up to about a million dollars in ARPA funds.
Can you clarify, I I again, I don't have the sheet in front of me, but I thought we only had four hundred and something in ARPA though.
Yeah, so it's interesting, since I think all communities had the situation with ARPA uh when it first started. They thought that if they placed it, if there was a vote of the select board to place it into a bucket.
Mm-hmm.
That they were all considered obligated.
Okay.
That's not the case, so uh the definition of obligation from the federal government is spent, contracted or purchase order signed.
Yep.
Um, so essentially like a contractual obligation with with a vendor or sub-recipient. Um, so in this case, um, you know, of the, it's approximately two million dollars, um, only half of that has been technically obligated, so we have to, I'm gonna keep using using ob- uh parentheses, big parentheses. Um, we have to obligate the remaining of it by the end of this calendar year.
And I think.
So that's where we're kind of getting into, we need to be creative with with ARPA, that's why we talked about, you know, paying our next educational assessment to generate free cash or some other mechanisms, so.
And that was gonna be my next question with this kind of, oh, if we put five fifty towards next year's budget, that leaves us about four hundred, four fifty unobligated, is there value to what we had discussed before? Putting that towards this fiscal, this current fiscal year to then default to free cash so that come November, we have free cash that that can be.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, absolutely, so I know that, so there's a, um town clerk's office, um, you know, had a potential um ARPA request. Um, I know in looking at some of our IT infrastructure, um, there may be a a smaller request to for a, um to leverage a a large grant opportunity for the municipal fiber grant. Um, so we'll definitely find a way to to obligate that money by the end of the year, and I would, my proposal would be to to use the remaining, just even if it's a couple hundred thousand dollars, um for our educational assessment, we'll see that back in free cash at the end of the year. Um, the replenishment of free cash is something also that we talked about it, um, with FinCom. Um, we, at at this point, we're, you know, about to close out the third quarter, um, so I think we're looking, you know, really good in terms of our revenue. We'll definitely have excess revenue in terms of where we are from the budget, and then obviously any departmental turnback. Obviously, don't have a figure for what that is right now, uh, once we get the final numbers from Q three, we'll have a better idea where we are. But between unspent monies from an educational assessment by using ARPA and then whatever we have from fiscal year twenty-four, I think our free cash um will be replenished and we'll be in a good position for future years too.
Let me ask you this, Austin, guy.
Yep.
So. Like, I've been asking for two years for a feasibility study for a rec build.
Yep.
Okay? No one's still to this day ever got me a number, it's all kind of, well, this, that, this and the other, okay? If we spend some of the ARPA money on a feasibility study, well, if the money goes towards the school and goes into free cash, the free cash then has to go to town and voted, right, in order to use it on a study, okay? As opposed to ARPA, we can just put it towards the study and get it on paper, right? So in other words, we got the money in our hand, right?
Yeah.
We may never have that money again. So, you know, I, I mean, I know.
Well, to be, so if we, if we put it towards an educational assessment, again, it just turns to free cash, so we're not losing that money.
No, but it's a different way, yeah, I mean, let's face it, you're lucky to get a hundred-plus people at these meetings, so
Right, but you're right, we're not getting another student.
All depending on, you know, which group of people show up, I mean, it, let's face it, we're we're about to ask them for how many percent this time and and now, you know, people don't like to hear studies, but everything I've heard, been told, read, in order for any project to move forward towards getting a grant or going to a bank and saying, we need four, five, six million, whatever it is, you have to have that study in hand, otherwise I won't even entertain it. So my point has always been, I I I would really like to ask the board to think about that, because uh, in the the, what, going on twelve years I've been in this town, the same conversation, like Dick said in the back room, it's the same conversation year after year after year. And I I I just feel like this is an opportunity that's not gonna come around again, and I don't know if it's fifty, sixty, seventy thousand, I don't know, that's that's your, you know, uh, profession, but I I just think like if we let this go, it's gonna be gone. And I just don't, I I really see this as the last opportunity to get something on paper, so we can present to the town and say, listen, or bank or, and say, listen, we have this many kids, you know, uh, paying this much money in fees, it can pay for itself or turn a profit, we can go to them with these numbers. If we don't have that, it's just not gonna happen, you know, so, I mean, that's the way I look at this. Um. I think I think it'll be a missed opportunity if we don't put something towards that.
The question I have, again, comes back to CIPC. The money that we had looked at using in ARPA, is that still being looked at for ARPA or is that off the table now?
Well, I I think we had proposed funding sources from ARPA, I think most of the.
Other funding sources too, but yeah.
Yeah, ARPA, uh, use of articles, um, I think whatever the board's determination of the remaining use of ARPA, I think, I think we can still maintain our capital budget and our capital plan, we just, we're gonna switch around what we would be using, so instead of ARPA, we propose to use free cash or vice versa, right? So, I still think our capital plan, uh, and our capital budget for FY twenty-five has identified the needs that we have right now for the town of Red Hunt and the future years as well, right? But we just now, given our situation, we've gotta, you know.
Well, the only, I I asked in two things, number one, were the school parking lots and the playground.
Yeah, those are proposed to be bonded though, those wouldn't be using any, um, any funding.
They're only like, uh, two hundred thousand, two twenty-five apiece for the parking lot, I believe that's what, it was only like four hundred.
For all three, about a million dollars.
Really? Cause I I thought it was only like four hundred thousand for the two. Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, so that was.
But as you recall, that was not included in the recommendations for the capital budget this year.
Right.
That was a recommendation of CIPC, um, but in terms of bonding, we were recommending the ladder truck.
Okay.
Is there, what? What projects, if you will, is your air quotes, were ARPA funds allotted to that we are now saying we need to re- appro- reappropriate?
Give me two seconds, I can pull it up for you, um.
Sorry, I don't have it in front of me, I I rem- I recall seeing something about, you know, the study for a site, a new water source, like I I'm
Yep.
I'm concerned if we had some things set aside, again, thinking about everything that's going on with the town water supply and all the issues that we've had, that we would be taking as.
and all the issues that we've had, that we would be taking a step backwards, or if it's not related to that?
Um yes and no. I mean, I, so I believe, I think the secondary water source study actually we could qualify for a DEP or Clean Water Trust Grant. Um we've been looking deep into this, and I know I've been talking closely with Paul, he's he's almost done the study for us pretty much. Um but also, you know, some of the quotes, I think the initial um allocation from this previous select board was around a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Um after talking with some engineering firms, they're actually recommending to to scale that back a little bit. Um where it'd be around the fifty thousand dollar range. Um so I think we, for a lot of these projects, we should really take advantage of whether it's, you know, submitting for earmarks, which our legislative delegation has asked us, applying for grant opportunities. Um for example, the secondary water source I've already included in the one-stop application process. Um which it ties right into that grant program, so I I think we can shift some of those projects to alternative funding sources. But there's just one, I mean, we've got um our uh contract services for public health, we're given an allocation. Um we paid, or we had a scope of work for um work at the library and senior center uh to replace the windows and siding. So there's about six hundred and forty-six thousand dollars in kind of open projects and balances. Um and it it varies. I can send that list out to to you all again. Um again, we, you know, I mentioned earlier in my update about the repairs to this building and the public safety building, that's an ARPA project. Um so, you know, I ultimately, whatever the board decides in terms of, do you wanna use additional ARPA to just get that project done? That's a decision we'll have to make too, that would lower our overall allocation to about seven, seven hundred thousand to be conservative, so. You know, quickly, we're either determining other funding sources or just say, is this project feasible right now? So that's kind of what we're.
That's that's why I asked, cause and and Leah, I mentioned this to Leah, and she brought it up at the meeting I was not able to go to, but the reallocation of any of the open articles that have been sitting for years.
Yep.
I realize it's only a hundred thousand dollars, but that's a big chunk of money for this town, and if something is sitting out there with a twenty thousand dollar balance in it, and that is just not a feasible amount to do that anymore, that needs to be looked at and we.
Yeah, that's a, so I'm sorry. That's a study right there, Tom. I mean, like, so to give you reference, the most recent quote uh that I got for space needs feasibility study for town hall slash senior center is um about thirty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
For those two buildings to be combined. So I think the quote I gave you is I just, I gave a wide range, like thirty to fifty thousand, depending on
Yeah, yeah, no, but what I'm saying is people wanna see things done.
Yeah.
They're tired, they're exhausted in this town of things being pushed down the road.
Yeah.
And I just don't see us, as much as I I understand it, put it towards, I I I get it, and on paper, that probably looks much better. People are exhausted hearing about these things being proposed and not getting done.
I mean, so on rec, we could, I mean, the good thing about the recreation and safe place programs is that they are self-supporting.
Right.
And and they have fund balance.
Right.
There could be a proposal to use their fund balance for the study as well.
Yeah, some of it, but you don't wanna break their bag either. They they're completely relying, yeah, they're completely relying on
Right.
what they take in, which again, has always been my point towards, and that's why I I I mentioned that one department. Whereas other departments drain off tax dollars, recreationally, and 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 before and after, up until now, they haven't.
Right.
They're self-sustaining programs. So that, you know, that's why I think it's an easier sell than some of the other projects.
That would just be my request is, can we, even if it doesn't make any impact on the fiscal twenty-five budget, I I think it's still important that those open articles need to be reevaluated and.
And that's, we may not get there tonight on the fiscal policy talk, but that is a practice that we introduced in the proposed financial policy systems. Just, you know, but as soon as the project's done, close it out, or if it's.
There's no movement in there.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, yes.
So I just looked at my CPA folder here. There has been uh some uh feasibility studies for recreational fields and things like that, so some money has come out of that program. There's been an awful lot of money to rebuild or build new ballparks and recreation fields, but there has been some feasibility study money allotted in that, so.
Absolutely. I I think that's great, and that's why I'm, listen, I think it's great, I think we should push forward. Yeah, no, you're right. But where we have this money now to get that, some type of wordage that we can go to a bank and say, you know, we need this, as opposed to just saying, what can you give us, you know, for, you 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 need something hard on paper, and uh.
I think.
So.
That I agree with.
Randy, you're saying that we could use some of that CPA money for rehabbing a ball field. I'm thinking of down behind N A Quad down there, back in there, that to, we had discussed that early about, well, why can't we have other teams come in and pay us for that field? To use that field, if it's a quality kind of triple A field.
It's all about how much, like, we had, we had a lease over at Glenwood for Rutland Soccer to make ball fields, and they didn't do anything with it because of the cost.
That is something that could benefit two ways. Number one, having the CPA fund available to do that, two, having it become an income-producing source, if you will, for the town.
Oh, I think it's, yeah, it's a win. It's a win long term. I I believe it is.
That's something you said. Not, uh, you know, just off the top of my head.
I'm thinking more of a, from this ARPA, from the study, I'm thinking more of a structure as opposed to the fields. Um.
So I think, if I can circle back, I think what FinCom was hoping to hear from us was if the board, for the fiscal year twenty-five budget, would be amenable to to putting up to five hundred and fifty-ish thousand of ARPA towards a revenue income, revenue source for the fiscal year twenty-five budget. Their concern, um and I personally share their concern, is having gone to an override last year um that we restored services to closer to where they should be, and then have a year, the following year that we need to make significant cuts, legitimately because a lot of it is the school funding situation, um which hopefully will will change. There's a lot of advocacy going on. Hopefully, that will change, but we won't realize that until well after we need to pass the town budget. So I think FinCom's hoping to hear from us if we're amenable to that five.
If I, if I could just, so maybe just say, fill the revenue source with ARPA?
Yeah.
And I only ask that just because I think there's gonna be some slight modifications to the to the budget. So for example, I just found out on Friday that we're definitely gonna have to do another single audit because we're gonna spend all of ARPA. So that will qualify us for a single audit. That wasn't budgeted for because we weren't planning on it, so um I'm gonna have to modify some line items to
Change things, but yeah. So I think that that's the hope, is FinCom's hoping to have around three hundred thousand free cash utilized, and then the the remaining um with ARPA, and then the conversation previously was the remaining ARPA would go towards the education assessment this year that would then default to free cash come November. Um it sounds like there's some questions, conversation as to what what's remaining there, and if there's other project, like how much of that should go towards the education assessment versus projects that could be done.
Okay, uh, we've got about a million sitting in RDIC. Does that require town approval?
RDIC?
Yeah, you know, in.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're talking about the sale of real estate.
Yes, we got about a million sitting there.
Yep.
That can be used for some of this too, right?
No, no, so there's, there's limitations on that, so um purchase of land or um.
Borrowing beyond five years, right?
Yep, purchases that would require borrowing beyond five years, i.e. uh design, building construction, things like that. Or others, you know, fire apparatus, whatever.
So free cash and ARPA, cause we don't wanna start touch stabilization, is about the only two items we have there.
Well, I mean, so.
And the, and the.
Just to your question though.
Stuff sitting on the.
Hmm.
To your question though, Harry, about the capital budget, right? I mean, we have a capital stabilization fund also in place for um I know, I think the practice has been we want to save it for a big purchase, but, you know, a lot of communities use, you know, they'll do smaller purchases out of it, and then ideally the replenishment of free cash at the end of the year, so.
I I think from our perspective, CIPC, we're never gonna get to a million point eight to buy a fire truck. It's not gonna happen. We might buy an ambulance with it or something like that.
Truck, we're only two buildings in town, or over three stories, yeah.
Yeah, we're not get, we're not gonna get there, so that's what we're looking at, and we had proposed couple of years that they use some of the fund, but we didn't need to at some point, so. But yeah, that's what it's there for. We're not gonna use it for big, you're right, Austin.
But is, so I keep circling back, it's late, and we still have a lot to go through. Um is the board amenable to authorize Austin and FinCom um to fill that gap between three hundred thousand free cash and whatever with ARPA? And then um that would be, I think, the first, the first thing, and then the remaining of ARPA is an additional conversation that it sounds like maybe we want a little bit, another meeting worth of conversation for.
Yeah, you've got now until the end of calendar year to to ha- find out how to obligate that, so if it's, you know, five fifty or whatever the number is for for budget, and then we figure out the balance for the rest, that's well within the board's authority to do.
So is the the board amenable to that um and kind of directive, and that would preserve um refrain from having to make any significant cuts to a budget that we finally got to almost where we should be? With the hope um that there's likely going to be some additional free cash realization through state funding and additional revenues coming in.
Uh I I guess I'd say, what's our alternative?
That's been the FinCom conversation.
What's the alternative? What, going to ask the town for more money, cutting?
Yep.
When we do have cash sitting here, I mean, I don't wanna spend the cash, certainly not ARPA from my perspective. But, you know, we don't really have a lot of choices this year, unfortunately.
So.
All right, so we'll know what, three thousand? I mean, uh, three hundred thousand?
I would say motion to uh utilize up, utilize three hundred thousand in free cash, and then the the remaining would be filled with ARPA, and that gives you a little bit of latitude to, as the budget numbers solidify.
Are we expecting anything else crazy to come in that would make that go higher than the current eight fifty-ish?
No, no, I get, I I think the number might fluctuate just slightly, and I say slightly, you know, ten to twenty thousand, either way. Um so we were, one of the things that hit us last year was our liability insurance. Um we budgeted higher on that one, and we know all the other kind of larger numbers. The schools are I think they finalized their budget number, so absent any major thing, which, yeah.
Okay.
So the answer to your question, no.
Okay.
So we have a motion on the table?
I don't think anybody moved it.
Do we have a?
No, do you wanna make it?
No, no, I I thought she already made it.
Said it, somebody move it.
Yes, say so moved.
Okay.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Call second. Any other conversation? Roll call, Harry.
Checkman I.
Matt's man I.
Ledger I.
Yeah, I'm with that.
White man I. Thank you. Um.
Delay the policy talk.
Yes, can we delay the policies tonight, please? That gives us more time. Um we have here, if I can jump to the one-day liquor license for Overlook Farm. I believe that's why these two gentlemen are still here. We have before us a one-day liquor license application for Overlook Farm. They are planning to do a happy hour in the garden. It's going to be a month six and eight twenty-three. Um it would be the wine and malt. Um and the only thing that I wanted to note is that um if the bartenders are certified, they answered no, but if it's required, they would get TIP certified. I think the town, I mean, previous boards had felt pretty strongly that the one days, um the servers should be TIP certified, it just reduces risk. Um but I don't know how this board.
We never accepted it as policy that it was required. It was one of those strongly encouraged, but we never required it
Right.
in writing, so that may be something the board wants to consider putting into policy?
Yep. Um and it says that at this time, the servers are the executive director. Um so it's obviously someone with um stat, like status in the, in the organization. Um but we have the application. Um I assume fees and everything have been
Yes.
collected and paid. Um. Yeah.
As far as the service, I guess I come back to the old adage, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. So having them certified servers really wouldn't be a bad idea.
I agree. I think we just need to formalize it.
Yep. I mean.
I'm talking about this particular case, so.
It does look, she, it does look like she had said, if it's required, they they're willing to get TIP certified. I don't know what the cost is and the kind of timeline, because this is in May, um but I do think especially if they're planning more than than just these four nights, that there is benefit to having a TIP certified, at least someone on on site that's there. Um again, it's the the liability and risk. Um Austin, I know you and I had spoken before about trying to come up with some of the one-day liquor license and town property policies, um so maybe we can try to revisit that as part of it.
Not till five twenty-four, I mean, they got plenty of time to get TIP certified, so I don't think that's an issue.
That's not the same thing as serve safe, right? That's something different? Service, cause serve safe, only one person has to be certified, right, in order to cover the whole place?
Yeah.
Yes.
Serve safe is for food, tips is for serving alcohol.
Yeah. Yeah, I think they should be able to get that done in that time.
So I guess I would ta- I would entertain a motion to approve the one-day liquor licenses as presented before us with the, with the hope that they could have a TIP certified server, um because it's not officially policy, I don't know that we can.
Should we say enter request that the certification, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't wanna get us, I don't want it to burn us where they just don't follow through, so how are we going to confirm they do that? If we approve it now?
Um you, I think you would have to make your motion contingent that you wouldn't approve them unless they provide their TIP certification.
So we essentially wouldn't sign it until they had their certification?
That would make, that would be bad.
Have to be explicit in your motion that it's a requirement and not a request, but
Right.
in that case, um maybe at the next meeting, I could bring it to the board to revise the policy to include that, so we we, so that we do also have it in writing, because we currently don't, so I just, I feel a little bit badly about that.
I think there was a conversation back and forth, and I don't wanna keep dragging this out, but was when um like the Catholic Church would do it, and it was a clearly a fundraiser, kind of um their non- nonprofit fundraiser, not having um a TIP, not putting the burden of having to have a TIP certified server, either that you're paying a TIP certified server or paying to have someone attend the TIP's certification that may not be there consecutively. Um and then once we broadened to the concerts on the common and the Fourth of July and and the other festivities festivities, very much felt that there should be TIP servers in those instances, this is going back a little bit more to those off-site specific um opportunities.
Would also have to make a distinction of whether or not you would require them to provide a copy of their certification, because up to this point, we've just taken them at their word of, yes, our ser- our servers are TIP certified, and then that's where it stopped. Um so you'd also have to decide if that's something you want me to ask for each time that they have that, provide that.
Yeah.
Just being a neighbor and hearing your conversation, so Overlook Farm is a nonprofit organization. They're talking about a handful of people, maybe more, in the garden, enjoying some wine and some malt beverages to do it, right? By like hedge is within a stone's throw of it. They have certified tip people there that they can certainly educate the people if there's a challenge to it. But if it's going to be a burden to them, similar to the St. Patrick's Church, when they've had their fundraiser, why make it? It's not your current policy in it now, I I would strongly encourage you to pass it with a suggestion that they get it or get educated on it for their own well-being. It doesn't matter to the town, in my opinion, whether somebody leaves Overlook Garden, whether they're drunk or not, TIP certified or not, it's not gonna affect the town, other than the police going up there.
Um I, I think we're, Randy, I think we're talking about two different things here. When you talk about the Catholic Church, this is specific exemption in state law for them. In terms of, if they buy the liquor themselves and serve it to their own congregation, not inviting the outside public, they have an exemption for that.
It was an outside, it was open to the public.
No, it was not. Oh, no. I attended those. They were not open to the public. It was for their own.
That's issued a one-day liquor license has to purchase their liquor from an authorized source on the state's list, or in this case, have the liquor donated, which is also allowed by the ABCC.
That's what they did.
Aware of a special exemption for the congressional church.
Not for the Congo church, but under law, what you're talking about, if the liquor was donated to them and they only use their own con- you're not going out on the street selling tickets to everybody, it was their own con- they are exempt under law for that.
I've never seen that.
Yep, I'll get you something if you want.
Yeah, cause I would like to know.
Be happy to get it for you, but this isn't that case. It may be a nonprofit, but it's not that case, so.
So I struggle a little bit because I feel like it's not currently policy. And so in that we can encourage them to do it and, and ask. But I think that to require is, is tough, because it's not currently policy. And that's something that we can revisit as a board at our next meeting. I, that's fine, but I think that one of the, and one of my questions would be, what's the cost, um, associated with that? But that's, I think currently it's not, so we can have a motion to approve or deny. We could have a motion to approve and, um, ask that they, that they, um, either become tip certified or are educated in what that entails. Um, I believe it's a ticketed event, if, am I, I'm not one hundred percent sure if it's a ticketed or if it's open to.
I don't know.
Um, I, do you know, Dick?
No, I don't. I, I was gonna ask you a question, I'll, I'll ask it in a moment. But, uh, I was on the board, I stepped off, I didn't wanna be part of it, uh, too many things going on in this town. But my concern is, the application says farm. Is there a period after the F, the A, and the R, and the M? Is there on your application? If not, I will be talking to, to them. Because I'm Overlook Farm, but not this nonprofit organization. Which is my.
But it's a full-profit event, correct?
The licensing name is Overlook Farm.
Not a full-profit event?
Food Awareness Resource of Massachusetts.
That's it.
D B A Overlook Farm. And they provided their tax I D number in the application. And I confirmed their nonprofit status on the state's website.
Yep.
I, I, I think these gray areas do need to be cleaned up.
Absolutely.
Without question, without question.
We talked about this last year when it came to some of the festivals, oh, give this one an exemption, that one an exemption, but not this one and that one.
And I'm not just looking at Overlook, I'm talking about all the events that come up throughout the year.
Yeah, that's the same argument every time, with discussion, I should say, every time.
But I, 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 I mean, whatever the board wants, I just fail to understand how you have two months where you can't get tip certified? I, I, I can't believe you can't get it done in two months. Am I wrong?
I, to be fair, I have no idea what that tip certification process looks like. Like, I don't know if it's classes that you have to, like, enroll in and enroll to take.
Probably an online thing, right?
Just gotta drink every day for a week and see what you act like.
That sounds doable.
So whatever it is, I mean, it, it's, uh, we do have to clean that up. It's part of the whole liquor process.
I agree, and I think now's a great time of year to do it, because now is when we're gonna start getting more and more requests over the summer. Um, I just, I personally feel bad in this situation, just because we don't have it documented as a policy.
This right here says it's online, Massachusetts tip certification online in two to three hours.
Yep.
Yeah, so it's a formality.
Not certified technically.
Of course, you should go.
Yeah, I could do, I could do the part.
And it says here for thirty-eight dollars, it's not cost prohibitive. But I think my struggle is still that it's not currently policy mandating it. So I think that we can ask them and see if they're willing to do it for these and then work on the policy next meeting. As you can see, our agenda, we, we still have a whole lot to go through, and we've been here for three hours, for almost four hours, so, um.
Leah.
What, sorry?
Yes, please.
So I would entertain a motion to approve as presented with the ask that they become ti- that they are tip certified.
Uh, I don't have a problem for five twenty-four, but six twenty-eight, seven, eight twenty-three, no, that should be mandatory now. I can't approve this whole thing.
But I think that they've applied under the old policy, they've applied for the whole stack under the old policy.
But the policy doesn't state that it's not required, it's just not present in the policy. So is that not at our discretion to request?
We give them the option of saying yes or no on the application. So I think giving the option of yes or no is, is, um, like an unspoken implication that there's the option to not be certified. And I know, if it's helpful, I can find the meeting minutes from the discussion that we had surrounding it last year as to the reasoning behind why the board didn't specifically make it a requirement. Um, cause I do remember we had that conversation, but we still landed on leaving that portion of it the same.
Right.
And I wanna say there was a discussion with our insurance company as well, when I worked through that.
Well, there might be somebody in their circle who's certified.
So we have no motion, cause nobody will move anything I say.
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second? I'll second it.
Second your own motion, can you? Technically.
She didn't make the motion.
Oh, you're right. I just said so moved, but yeah, you're right.
Is there conversation?
The only conversation again is, I would vote for five twenty-four. For six twenty-eight, seven twenty-six, or eight twenty-three.
Alright, so then you know what, we'll hold it. And I don't, I, I don't know that if it's been submitted under the old policy, how we can require them to, to do something if it's been submitted under the old policy legitimately. I don't know.
Alright, let, let's wait.
So.
We got time.
I mean, they've, they've offered that said they will get tip certified.
I'm sorry, did I mean to cut you off? The reason they ask now is because they wanna start advertising the event, but they don't wanna advertise until they know that they have the licenses. I would argue that we had vendors on town property that were potentially serving without their tip certification. This is not on town property.
The other piece to Jen's point, eh, or Tom's point, is it says here, will your ti- will you be certified using certified bartenders? No, if so, please include their.
Tips number.
Names and certification numbers. If this is required, we will get tip certified. At this time, servers are the executive director, so I think it sounds like they're willing to do it. We can
Okay.
See if they're willing to work with us and make a motion contingent on them getting tip certified. And if it becomes a sticking point for them, then they can come back and have a conversation with us, I suppose.
Okay.
Is that more amenable to the board?
We agree with that.
Yeah, I can work with that.
Okay.
So I would entertain a motion then to ex- to approve the one day liquor license applications as presented. Um, with the requirement that there is tip certification.
And this, the motion's on the table, okay.
Wait, no, we need a second.
I'll second that.
Any conversation?
I'm good with that one.
Alright, roll call, Harry.
Checkman I.
That's a.
Leger I.
Yalman I.
White man I, and if we can add the policy to the next agenda, please, to revisit all of that. Thank you. Um, we're gonna hold the discussion of the financial policies, thank you, Austin. Um, I'm gonna hold the chapter seventy funding letter, because I think we had a, a, agreed to send the letter. I received some new information that I wanna ensure that what's included in the letter is not going to hurt us coming out of hold harmless status next year or subsequent years. Um, there's a whole lot of funding pieces, so I think a more general letter just asking for an increase to chapter seventy funding and maybe specifically the inflation rate is the best way to go. There's questions as to, um, some of the other pieces, so I don't wanna make, I wanna make sure that we're not hurting ourselves for subsequent years. Um, if we can get that letter pulled together and available for signatures and people are, are okay with it, then. Um, cause I think the concept was that it was a valid, um, thing. Similar to when you had written the letter on behalf of the board for the, um.
Oh, did, uh, is that on here about that, uh, funding letter we talked at the meeting?
That's just what I was talking about.
Oh, okay.
Um, some additional information came out, so I don't wanna send a letter. I, I don't want the draft that we originally were thinking to go until we clarify that we're not going to hurt ourselves for subsequent years' funding. Um, we have the two thousand twenty-four annual town meeting, proposed calendar for the town meeting on May eleventh. Um, we, it's, the proposal is that we would open the warrant tonight. Um, and it would close Monday, April first at five P M. Um, then our, the Tuesday, the articles would be sent to council for review. Um, that Thursday, the eleventh, would be the joint meeting of us and FinCom to review and recommend the articles. Then the following week, um, our regular scheduled meeting Tuesday, we would sign the warrant. Um, and then post, um, as presented in the timeline. So I would entertain a motion to open the warrant for the annual town meeting, which is scheduled Saturday, May eleventh, twen- um, at six P M at Glenwood Elementary School with a closing date of April first, twenty twenty-four at five P M.
So moved.
Motion is there a second?
Second, I'm ready.
Um, any conversation? Hearing none, roll call.
Checkman I.
Mattman I.
Leger I.
Yalman I.
White man I. Um, thank you, and Tamika, I, can you please just send out to depart- I assume you guys will send out to department heads and boards and commission?
Email queue, don't you worry.
Thank you, thank you. Um, and just to confirm, we're at six P M, because I think the schools still have us, uh, still have us listed at four P M for our annual town meeting?
I've already worked it out with Glenwood.
Okay, but, no, no, but, um, like, Wachusett is still advertising on our behalf that it's at four.
Oh.
The district.
Oh, okay. I'll clear that up with Randy. Sure.
Thank you. Um, we have the Rutland Regional Dispatch Advisory Committee, Austin, do you wanna pick this one?
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, just to be brief, uh, there's two documents in your packet for tonight. One is a, a correspondence dated February twenty-seventh from, uh, Town Administrator of the Town of Hubbardston. Um, requesting, um, uh, advisory committee to be formed to, um, have greater stakeholder feedback in dispatch operations. As you know, we have been, uh, providing emergency dispatch services, um, to four other communities. Uh, for, you know, I think dating back to the eighties, and we've since expanded that operation. Um, it's a hosted community setup, so, um, what that means is it's, it's our service, they're our employees, it's our operation. Um, and we provide that service through an I M A to other communities. Um, it's about a million dollar program, um, between grants and, and assessments and everything else. It's, it's a million dollar service. Um, the Town of Hubbardston and their select board, I know there's, there's some history there with the Town of Hubbardston. Um, their select board and their town administrator are essentially asking for, um, increased level of decision-making, if you will, in the Town of Rutland's dispatch services. Um, we understand that. I think, um, certainly it's a service that's important, we wanna make sure that we continue to provide a quality service. However, I think what they're actually would be better suited for the Town of Rutland and, and the four communities is, is exploring a district model. I think, uh, and I can explain what that means, essentially, um, the regional dispatch would turn it into its own entity. Very similar to a water district, uh, utility, uh, electrical light utility district, school district. Um, they would no longer be Town of Rutland employees, they would be whatever regional dispatch employees. Um, there's many benefits to that setup. Uh, for example, funding, um, State nine-one-one currently provides additional funding sources for districts. So when we're talking about potentially a new building, um, grant opportunities for their technology, staffing opportunities. Um, also right now, to begin with the board, um, there's costs associated with running the dispatch that are not related to our stakeholder communities. We'll get there. So health insurance, when we develop the budget, we go based off of an initial projection. That budget is essentially never modified, so Town of Rutland needs that cost. Um, pension assessment, that happened a couple of years ago as well. Um, so this setup, believe it or not, a district would be more beneficial for Rutland from a financial perspective. Um, and when you have a district, the select board appoints, um, from each community, appoints board of directors that represent their respective community at that district, oversees the executive director, oversees the policy, um, oversees the finances, so there's still a significant level of decision-making from the Town of Rutland and all the stakeholder communities. Most of the new dispatch centers that are formed are formed at the district model, just again, as everything I mentioned and some. So, um, I have, uh, drafted and have signed alongside, uh, our public safety officials, uh, the dispatch director, police and fire chiefs, our response to the Town of Hubbardston's official correspondence, essentially saying, we hear you, however, we're proposing moving in X direction. Um, and I think we would just have some conversations at the board level, at the town administrator level as well, just to see if that's something we wanna worth, uh, we want to, um, explore a little bit more. Obviously, it doesn't tie us to anything, but again, it's just starting that conversation. So, um, I just wanted to ask for essentially your blessing of this correspondence and see if, if Hubbardston wants to explore that conversation, but also, again, there's three other communities that are, um, potentially interested in this as well. Um, I do wanna mention as well, just one final thing, we have tried, been trying to find ways to expand the dispatch service. We are very limited where we are. I don't know if all of you have been in the dispatch center yet, it's a closet, to be honest. This bill, this room is bigger than the dispatch center.
Way, way bigger.
Way bigger.
Yeah.
Like, maybe double, uh, if not more. Um, so, when we say, hey, X community, are you interested in joining? They say, sure, we'll come look, and they say, oh, this is like, this is your regional dispatch center? Um, it's, we're not really in a good position where we can market, we ha- I think we provide great service, but in terms of our facility, we're not there. Um, so a district, again, would allow us to be eligible for more grant opportunities, whether it's for, um, rehabbing a facility, building a new facility. But again, it also encourages potential communities that are interested in our service. They, you know, they have some ownership in the service as well, whereas right now, again, everything kinda runs through Rutland. Um, which is, you know, great in many respects, because Rutland has more control over the service. But again, in term, in terms of talking about public safety communications, we are a partner with, with four other communities as well, so.
Does having a district provide us greater opportunities to have the state build us? I mean, I understand what you're saying, the constraints, that maybe if we move into the old library, would make it look a little better, we can become more. But what, how can we get that other piece? Is that on the edge of getting, or is our space really what's limited from getting that state built?
Um, yeah, no, so, I mean, we, we could try for, for example, a new building right now. I, I don't think we'd get it, just because I think we need to be able to show that with some ownership from other communities, we would be able to grow. Like, the state wants to make sure, if they're gonna put a substantial investment in this program, in the service, in terms of a new building, they wanna see, ideally, we have three or four regional centers across the Commonwealth. You go down south and they have, you know, three or four centers that cover the whole state. We still have several hundred communities that are running their own dispatch service, it's not efficient. So the state wants to make sure that if we're gonna invest a substantial amount of money in a new facility, we maybe grab a bunch of communities in central mass and we become, you know, central mass regional dispatch. Um, so, so that would, I think, so I think moving to a district model would, would say, we're taking this seriously, we wanna grow, we wanna expand. Um, but again, you know, it also, you know, we, I think would have an ability to share the costs overall of the service a little bit more. Where right now, again, as I mentioned, Rutland is, is, we're, we're carrying a lot of everything. Um, not to get too technical, but technically, our, our pension assessment goes down, our O P M assessment goes down, because they're no longer Rutland. So in terms of our accrual, there, there's a lot of other considerations to it, but, um, but again, this is, this is something I think it's worth at least having a conversation, taking a look at, see if it makes sense. Um, there's countless feasibility studies out there that, you know, if you're looking at a regional dispatch model, they're recommending a district, so.
I have one question, if I may. Um, this came from, from Hubbardston directly, are the other communities aware of the communication between Hubbardston? And or can there be communication to the other communities about the engaging in the, um, district model?
Yeah, so I, when we received this correspondence, I did send it to the other communities' town administrators, um, just as a N F Y I, uh, with the message that, you know, we're, our, our board will be kinda discussing this next steps. And the plan is to just share this with them as an F Y I as well. And we do have, uh, quarterly stakeholder meetings with, uh, with the town administrators from each community. And then, um, Director Moriarty also holds monthly meetings with the public safety officials as well. So, um, we had a brief conversation when we talked about the budget with them. Um, but certainly, I think this will kind of, if, if the board approves this communication, we'll look to schedule a meeting with. we'll look to schedule a meeting with the respective individuals from each town too, s- to see if they're interested.
Yeah, I just didn't necessarily want them to be blind, you know, because this is a communication driven by one of the communities. I didn't want
Yeah. Yep.
the re- the o- other communities to be kind of blindsided by the conversation or whatever.
Yep.
We'll pick up on that.
Um, because I think the relationship has been overall positive. I know Hubbardston has always had some some concerns, but I
Yep.
so, I mean.
So, could benefit us big time for a district. By having the district, I mean, could benefit us big time. Maybe not this year, but.
Yeah. Yeah, no, this would be, in terms of Rutland, let's say, you know, let's say tonight you voted to become a district. There's um, collective bargaining that has to happen, like impact bargaining that has to happen with our current unit, like there's a
Yeah.
probably about an eighteen month transition from district to fully autonomous district run by an executive director, everything else. So it's it's quite the lengthy process.
So Jen, Paul, Tom, do you guys have any kind of questions con- like?
No, I think it's a great idea. I think it's the future.
Yep.
Do you wanna formal motion, Austin, that we support the the correspondence back?
That, yeah, that would be great.
All right.
If you're willing.
I'll make a motion that, um, we, uh, support Austin and his effort to, uh, work with Hubbardston and the other towns in the district to, uh, uh, come together to formalize some type of an agreement there. Is that?
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Roll call, Harry.
Second I.
Matt's in.
You're dry.
Did you get all that?
Yeah, I'm an eye.
White man eye. Um, I'm gonna take quickly, we have a events committee resignation, um, to accept the resignation of Ann Jarvie. This is a formal, um, thing that we have to do. Uh, she has submitted her resignation letter. Um, and we just need to accept that. Um, I believe in the conversation a couple of meetings ago with the events committee, they're not looking to fill this position because they were looking to reduce the the membership numbers to an odd number, so.
Perfect.
I- is this who I think it is?
It's Ann Jarvie.
Yeah. Kevin's mic.
Um, so I would entertain a motion to accept, um, Ann's resignation from the events committee.
So moved.
Motion is our second.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Roll call, Harry.
Second I.
Matt's in.
Dry.
Yeah, I'm an eye.
White man eye with appreciation for the time. Um, I know that at the beginning, they spent a lot of time on that, um, and getting the committee up and going, so I appreciate that. And wish them all the best. Um, we have the conservation I M A, a shared conservation agent um, slash stormwater coordinator with the Town of Sterling. Um, Austin, I think you provided the pack with us, I'll let you.
Yep, uh, thank you very much. Um, so, um, in your packet is a proposed I M A program between Town of Rutland and Sterling. Uh, this kind of spurred off of, um, there was an initial, in the F Y twenty-four budget, there was a creation of a conservation agent position. Um, the, I think the initial job description that I received actually said Town of Paxton and Town of Rutland because the thought was, when they were discussing this position at the time, was a regional position with another community for the conservation agent. Um, we hired a conservation agent, went to the Town of Paxton, and they said, you're too late, we hired one already. So, there's no interest in in, uh, a shared position there. Um, coincidentally, the conservation agent that we hired at the time also worked for the Town of Sterling. So that kind of sparked a initial interest in, hey, we have the same employees, is there possibility that we can share this position? So we've been talking, um, with the Town of Sterling after kind of the transition from the conservation agent um, to formalize a partnership. Some of the feedback that we received from the previous conservation agent was ten hours. Um, so she was ten hours in Rutland, nineteen hours in Sterling, ten hours in Rutland was far too little. Um, so we are proposing to increase it to nineteen hours, um, also share nineteen hours in the Town of Sterling. Um, so a total of thirty-eight hours to be shared between the two communities, um, and we would split the costs fifty percent um, in between. As you know, in the proposed F Y twenty-five budget, um, I'm proposing use of Wetlands Protection Act funds and also, uh, Stormwater Enterprise funds, so there would be no general fund um, uh, monies for this position. Um, in terms of the remaining balance of this year, we actually have money left in the general fund that would be used for this salary. Um, our initial costs is, we'll actually still have a surplus in that, uh, in that line item because we're getting so close to the end of the year. Um, so this would just be to formalize that position between the two communities. Um, and, uh, and the position would report to the town planner here in Rutland. Um, and while the agreement says Town Administrator in Sterling, it's my understanding, they also intend on making it report to the town planner in Sterling as well. Um, and the reason why we also added stormwater as responsibilities, conservation, as we all know, um, relies heavily or leans heavily on some of our stormwater regulations. Um, we believe that that, those responsibilities would be important to include in the conservation agent as they're looking at what reports, they're they're working with developers on making sure that they, um, maintain their stormwater. And it's also critical for the Town of Rutland because, as you know, we have, um, some intense stormwater obligations. This position would allow us to, um, maintain the the reporting requirements, um, design requirements, things like that, so. That's the proposal. Happy to answer any questions of the board in town.
Um, I got a que- I, i- i- if you, you call it shared conservation agent.
Yep.
But I don't see here where she is really attached to the conservation commission.
Uh, so that's tied in the job description. So if you look at the job description, um, which is attachment A, um, it talks about planning, but also organizes, administers and oversees conservation commission business, provides focus, rookie for, uh, um, provides focus and expertise to the commission relative to their mandate. Um, and then a lot of the bold points after that talk about Concom related, um, responsibilities, whether it's N O I's, um, R D A's, site visits for planning zoning conservation. So it's all as, so the department that we have now is planning, community development and conservation. So it's, uh, day-to-day conservation, but again, it's within that department and talking about zoning, things like that. But this job description, their primary focus would be conservation and stormwater.
So do they interact with the conservation commission?
Oh, yeah.
Or they will?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, they'll be the staff liaison.
Where would the office be for this?
So the the office was already for the previous, uh, conservation agent in the planning office.
Right.
So, uh, I don't know if you've been in recently, but we we got two new desks for the town planner, uh, and another one for the conservation agent. Um, so they'll already have a home.
Okay. Um, I see that she does the normal stuff. Organize, administers and oversees conservation commission business. Does that mean she is telling the conservation commission what to do?
No, that's no different than I don't tell you guys what to do, but I, you know, I I'm your your staff liaison. Um, to make sure that the work of the the commission or work of the select board gets done, so.
Okay.
And is legal and.
That's the day-to-day staff person for the conservation commission, similar to the town planner and some other staff, uh, positions that we have.
And I was gonna say, and to offer kind of best practice guidance, legal guidance, um, that kind of.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, what about her transportation needs? Does she use her private car? Do we, is that split between the Town of Sterling, like the cost of that? If if that's included in her pay, and how much are we looking to pay her?
Uh, so we're we're looking to utilize the, um, the salary that's from the Town of Sterling, so the range that we had was forty-five to sixty-five thousand. Give and take.
Full time, so thirty-eight would be basically full time. She'd get full benefits from us?
Thirty-eight hours. Yep. Yes.
And then then Sterling would compensate us for that?
We would invoice them monthly.
Okay.
Or or quarterly, sorry.
Okay.
My miss, can you repeat that? Okay.
And just on travel, we have a, um, we reimburse, uh, employees already for miles associated with work, uh, based off the I R S rate, so
Okay.
um, whatever work, if they're using their personal vehicle for town business, we already reimburse employees already.
Well, do they have somebody already or they don't?
Well, they have an interim, I think, right now. Obviously, our position is vacant, um, but it's the intent of both communities. We would, we would do the search together.
I mean, I'm looking for some, you're you're looking at some educational skills here that are pretty hefty. You know, I mean, ability to read and interpret engineered plans, drawings and data tables, I mean. Okay.
Um, my only question and comment, I think, is just for the, um, Wetlands Protection Act Fund to make sure that the that it can be out, spent on the actual work that the individual is doing. I know, I think that there's some special requirements. I'm not one hundred percent sure, you probably know better than I do. Um, but I thought at one point there was conversation about the fund, the work that was being paid out of that fund needed to be very specific. And also, I would caution that at some point, I think that we should mm, try to get it within the levy, um, at some point, maybe.
Yeah, so there's communities that
I don't wanna deplete.
fund their position entirely from W P funds.
Okay.
We have a a healthy fund balance in that, in that right now. That's why we're proposing for F Y twenty-five to split the costs.
Uh-huh. Yep.
Um, but again, as I mentioned, I've also allocated thirty-five thousand dollars in the stormwater wages budget for this position as well.
Yeah. And I think, and that's fine, you have a better handle on it, and maybe those fees need to be reevaluated also. I know periodically, we should be looking at our fee structure regard, for a whole host of of them, so to make sure that we're covering our bases. I just don't wanna deplete a fund either um, any of you two without a plan.
I think the Wetlands Protection or the Wetlands Bylaw will help greatly with that, so that we can charge fees that we currently are not charging fees for, but that other communities do.
Right.
But that's the key. We need that Wetlands Bylaw to do that.
This position could help shepherd that along.
Absolutely.
For sure.
Yep. Okay, no, that's fine. I, um, and I think, um, did you have conversation with conservation Peter? I mean, I know this is kind of one of those, it's a, it's a town administrator hire. Um, and so kind of basing off the fact that originally it was bu- budgeted with the sense that it was likely going to be a shared position, how that share is switched is, um.
So no, no, I did not have a conversation, not, 'cause I M As are under the select board. Uh, but also again, this was already proposed to be a a regional position, and we're proposing to give more hours to the Town of Rutland Conservation Commission, so no, I did not seek their approval. Um, because I figured you you folks would be the approval authority for this.
Didn't I see sixty or sixty-five in the budget for that position under stormwater?
Yes.
My boy, and so we'll be getting about thirty some thousand dollars back.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause that stormwater budget also, um, includes, um, indirect costs for, um, our public works department for some of the stormwater work that they do as well. Similar to our water, uh, water sewer, where we have some indirect costs for, you know, like Nancy McCaruso.
So, um, is there any other questions or comments about this? I would entertain a motion to approve the I M A um, between Rutland and Sterling for the shared conservation agent slash stormwater, um, position as presented.
Stormwater.
Motion second?
Second.
Any other conversation? Hearing none, roll call. Harry.
Second I.
Matt's in.
You're dry.
Yeah, I'm an eye.
White man eye. Um, we have future meetings, April first is a regular meeting. Um, this, actually, this Tues- this Thursday, I believe Tracy Novak from Massachusetts School Committee is coming to present to FinCom. Um, I, Austin, Tommy, Rochelle, and I saw her at Wachusett a few weeks ago, maybe a month or so ago. Um, I believe she's going to present a Rutland specific update, and she is holding invaluable and understands the school funding mechanism. So even if you can tune in, um, I don't know if there's worth, if if it's worth being co-hosted, um, I plan on attending mostly for information stakes, but, um, uh, if we think we'll have a quorum, we can co-post, or I would at least recommend trying to watch the recording or something. Um, then April first, April sixteenth, which is a Tuesday, that follows Patriots Day, the twenty-ninth, and then we have the annual town meeting on May eleventh. Um, do you feel like we need to do the executive session? Um, given that it's eight forty-five, should we do a, or nine forty, almost nine forty-five? Should we do a short one, like a fifteen, aim for fifteen minutes for an update? Um, and to see if we can move forward?
Sure.
Does that work? Is there any other business to come before us in open session?
I would just like to make a comment about the state budget regarding the schools. It it is unfortunate that they have pitted the towns against the districts of Wachusett. I mean, cutting our budget, what, close to three million dollars? It's just unheard of, and to punish the people like that, I'm I'm just so disappointed in the state, and I'm glad we're doing that. And I'm disappointed in them.
I agree.
Then I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session for reason number six to reconsider, to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on nego- negotiation, negotiating position of the public body, subject discussion of disposition plan for two thirty-two Main Street, Franklin Franklin T. Woodhouse, not to return, to uh, to adjourn from executive session, not to return to open session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Second I.
Matt's in. Calvin I.
Do you wanna go into executive session?
Say I.
I'm dry.
White man eye. Okay.